Okay. Welcome to the February 13th, 2024 City Council Meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
All right, we'll move into the current business on the study session. The first item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Do you have any clarifications of items on the consent calendar? Councilmember Kleiman?
None for me.
Councilmember Blom?
None.
Councilmember Avery?
None.
Councilmember Wagon?
None.
Councilmember Grant?
None.
Mayor Protem Stapleton?
None.
Great. So we'll move into our proclamation recognizing Nikki Presley Milliband. Nikki, why don't you come on up to the podium? So this one, this is a fun one. So Nikki, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. And then you'll be, you're welcome to say whatever you'd like. But it's a little bit of a long one because of the amount of leadership positions you have held. And I actually may have cut some of them just for length purposes, so I apologize in advance. But whereas Nikki Presley Milliband and her husband Joel are residents of Coronel Mar, and whereas Nikki recently received the Franklin G. West Award, which is the highest honor given by the Orange County Bar Association, and whereas Nikki has spent nearly three decades actively participating in the legal profession, beginning in 1995, when Nikki joined the Legislative Resolutions Committee, which she later chaired, through becoming the Orange County Bar Association President in 2018, and today as she prepares to chair the Masters Division of the Orange County Bar Association. And whereas Nikki serves on her law school's executive board since 2011, is a board member of the OC Gang Reduction and Intervention Partnership, the OCBA's mentoring committee, also formerly chair, the LRAS Committee, five-time chair, Leadership Development Committee co-chair, former Judiciary Committee Member, State Bar Task Force co-chair, as well as an active member of affiliate bars, including HBA, Okaba, TMBA, OCJBA, IALOC, and CBA, as the 2023 Attorney of the Year Award recipient. Do you work?
I do work.
And whereas Nikki Presley Milliband additionally dedicates time to pro bono work as president-elect of the community legal aid SOCal, now therefore I, Will O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Nikki Presley Milliband for receiving the Orange County Bar Association's Franklin G. West Award.
Do you want me to say anything?
You're an attorney.
No, I will be actually very short. Thank you very much. I'm very honored for this, this commendation and proclamation. I know attorneys oftentimes are the butt of many jokes, but the ones that I'm around and the most of the attorneys that I know here in Orange County actually stand up for the community, get involved with protecting the public from programs such as allowing attorneys to become members of the bar without taking exams and things like that that are coming down the road. So we all do stand up for our community and we try to protect the public from some of the programs that have been coming down the road for that. So thank you very much.
Awesome. So, yep, I'm sorry. So we're going to go ahead and take pictures right over there. And my fellow councilmembers, will you join me, please? Next up, we have proclamation recognizing John and Ann Warman. John and Ann, come on up. So Mayor Protem Stapleton has invited you up, and we're very excited to honor you, so we'll do the same thing. Whereas Ann Warman recently represented the city of Newport Beach on the city's Rose Parade float as a former Rose Queen, and whereas Ann Warman has been the driving force behind the success of educational efforts like the Newport Elementary Foundation and Newport Harbor High School Foundation, and whereas John Warpman is the chairman of the Board of Governors at the Balboa Bay Club and Resort, a Commodore and the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce, and past President Alito Isle Community Association, and whereas John and Ann have helped raise millions of dollars for numerous local charities and scholarship programs, including but not limited to the Ben Carlson Memorial and Scholarship Foundation, the Newport Beach Junior Lifeguard Foundation, the Balboa Bay 1221 Club Scholarships, among many others. And whereas their children Devon and John are following their parents' lead and have been very actively involved in the Newport Beach Foundation, now therefore I, Will O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize John and Ann Warpman as two of our city's finest examples as helpers. Congratulations.
Thank you. Well, thank you, thank you so much. You know, I'm used to being and prefer to be in the one with the mic and handing out the awards, not receiving recognition. We've had the honor of working with everybody up before us, either at one of our events or we've been there to support yours, and it's truly been a pleasure and an honor. We're a very public family, but we're very private. But I want you to indulge me just for a second. The best and smartest decision I ever made was 34 years ago tomorrow, when I asked, on both knees, asked Ann Martin to marry me. I know that because not a day goes by without family or friends telling me that I've overmarried, and I'm the luckiest man on earth. We built our home together, literally, on Lido Isle. Our daughter Devon and son John were born at Hoag, and we dedicated our lives to our children, each other, and to our community. My only goal is for my wife, is for my wife to enjoy every day, make her proud, and set a good example for our children. But make no mistake, everything that we have done has been together. I get way too much credit for stuff. We have done it together, side by side, as a team, and picks our causes, does more than the majority of the work, involved for each and every event, and she has zero interest in any credit for doing good deeds. Our litmus test has always been what is best for our family and our community of Newport Beach. And if I'm to be totally honest, my proudest moments, or moments or moment, is when people walk up to me and go, I know you, you're Ann's husband, you're Devon's father, or you're John Jr.'s dad. So thank you.
I want to thank you all, too, and it's so nice to see all these familiar, wonderful faces up there. My proudest is that, you know, our children have gotten involved and been in the Distinguished Citizen Program, and our daughter's on the Newport Beach Foundation Board, and that's what makes me the most proud, that they're following in the footsteps and keeping Newport, Newport.
Awesome. So hang on, stick around, we're going to go, we're going to go down and take some more pictures. So I'm going to read a proclamation. You are welcome to say whatever, anything you'd like, just, you know, keep it PG. So anyway, so whereas Niels Hoffman from Coronel Mar High School won the 2023 CIF Southern Section Individual Boys Tennis Singles Tournament and managed to do so without dropping a set. That's awesome. Congratulations. Whereas Niels also won the 2023 Surf League Tennis Singles Championship, and whereas Niels was named Southern California National High School Tennis All-American Co-MVP. Wow. And whereas Niels was also a finalist at the prestigious Ojai Tournament, as well as at the United States Tennis Association Winter Nationals, where he won the sportsmanship award that, which is might be the best. Congratulations on that. And whereas Niels finished a season with an overall 51-5 record, now therefore I, Will O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Niels Hoffman. Congratulations. That's fantastic.
Thank you so much. I'm just, thank you so much for acknowledging everything. It's a huge honor, and I'm amazed to be up here in front of all these wonderful and important people. And then I'd like to thank my family. So my box over there, they're great, and they always help out, and I couldn't ask for a better support team. So thank you.
Awesome. Congratulations. So we're going to, yep, sorry, go ahead, clap. That's fantastic. So we're going to do the same thing right over there. So come on down, folks. You know, Joe, at some point, someone will say they're going to Arizona.
One day, one day. Devon's here.
Ava. Do we have Ava here? Come on up, Ava. Did I at least pronounce that one right? Is it Simos or Simos? Perfect. First off, great letterman, so thank you. Ava Simos from Coronel Mar High School won the 2023 CIF Southern Section Division III 100-meter track event. Congratulations, that's awesome. And whereas Ava was named the 2023 League Most Valuable Female Athlete in the 100-meter, 200-meter, and 100-meter hurdle, and whereas Ava won first place in the 100-meter and 200-meter event at the Orange County Track and Field Championships, while also earning Female Athlete of the Meat honors, and whereas Ava is the Coronel Mar High School Record Holder in the 100-meter, 200-meter, and 100-meter hurdles, let's give a round of applause for that. That's awesome. Now therefore I, Will O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Ava Simos.
I just want to say thank you all. I really appreciate receiving this recognition. I also want to thank my amazing friends and family for always supporting me, and of course, my coaches, Kevon and Coach Sumner back there. I couldn't have done it without them.
Awesome. So Ava, our Mayor Protem, asked if there was any point in my life I could have run a sub-12-second 100? No.
How about a 40?
Calm down over there. Did I get that one?
Yeah.
All right. And Yahweh?
Yeah. Jambe and Yahweh.
Jambe and Yahweh. Okay. All right, I got you. All right. Malice Jambe and Yahweh from Coronel Mar High School won the 2023 CIF Division III Cross-Country Championship, and whereas Malice placed sixth at the state cross-country championships, and whereas Malice will be running cross-country and track and field on a scholarship at San Luis Obispo. That's awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now therefore I, Will O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Malice Jambe and Yahweh. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I just want to start off by thanking you for this recognition, and then also thanking my parents and my coaches. I wouldn't have made it this far without my parents' support, and especially coaches. I think it's really important that, like, you have a stable coach, because not everyone's lucky to have one. And then I have Coach Sumner here. You go through bumps, but I've made it here today, and then I'm going to go to Cal Poly, so I'm really excited. Thank you.
Awesome. You've obviously raised some pretty amazing people, and it's really fun for us, especially up here, to recognize people who have put in the time and effort and all those difficult hours to get to the place that you are. You've got a lot of future ahead of you, so we wish you all of the best. And now we're going to be turning to a discussion about our general plan update. I do not anticipate that's why you're here. So unless you would really, really like to stick around for this, you're very welcome to go enjoy yourselves outside in beautiful sun. That's funny. I could have guessed who the last people out of that one would have been. All right, so we're going to move now into study session item number five, the Housing Element Implementation Program Amendments. So Mr. Jurdis, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor O'Neill and City Councilmembers. Good evening. Simone Jurdis, Assistant City Manager, and with me is Ben Zadiba, Principal Planner, Jaime Mario, Deputy Community Development Director, and Yolanda Summerhill, Assistant City Attorney. Tonight, what we want to do is just give you an update of what we have been working on. If you recall, back in 2022, we got our housing element certified. That was just the beginning of the process, and since then, we've been working on our land use element along with our general plan update committees' members. And we've been working on our zoning code update, we've been doing, working on our objective design standards, and we have just released our EIR. We are tracking forward for a ultimate vote in November of this year. Ben Zadiba has a presentation for you, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to him, and he can go through some of the details and highlights that we have to share with you this evening.
Thank you, Simone. Ben Zadiba, Principal Planner. I'm going to provide you a presentation. Don't worry, there's a lot of things to track, but at the end, there is a key takeaway slide, so I'll make sure to leave that up so we can digest it. So as Simone mentioned, I kind of wanted to step back and give you a brief background. We were issued a six-cycle regional housing needs assessment allocation in early 2020, which seems like forever ago now. 4,845 new housing units was our allocation of varying levels of affordability. As Simone mentioned, I think it's important to share that we were the eighth Orange County city to receive compliance designation from state housing community development department. And just for fun, because I think this stuff is fun, I checked today, and there are still 14 Orange County jurisdictions that do not have a compliant housing element. As Simone mentioned, this is a continuation of an effort. Our next step is implementation of the housing element, and we really must rezone for the housing development anticipated in the housing element by February of 2025, and that's a state mandate. So stepping back, why are we here? We're going to call the housing element "the plan," and now we're undergoing implementation, which we're going to call "the action." So as Simone touched on, there are several implementing components. We've got the general plan land use element, which needs to be updated to support the overlay rezoning that is going to take place. We've got objective design standards that will help us maintain local control over quality design. And then as Simone mentioned, we have a environmental impact report required to consider and contemplate the added density and what sort of impacts may result from that. I do want to note that, that's not listed up here, the coastal land use plan and the local coastal program will need to be amended in certain areas, because we do have some sites within the coastal zone, and that's something I'll touch on a little bit later. So we're going to segment it by starting with draft land use element update. Just want to say that the draft land use element update so far has been reviewed by the three-member general plan update steering committee, as well as the 30-member general plan advisory committee. There is a land use element subcommittee, which also reviewed and provided input on the policy changes. After several meetings and iterations, the general plan advisory committee and the steering committee both supported the document moving forward on August 21st of last year. They were posted online for input from the public, and then we had a Planning Commission Study Session subsequent to that in September. We've been taking stakeholder input, and we revised and posted it again earlier last What you see in front of you is just a snippet of what is posted online. I'm not anticipating you're going to read all of this, but I wanted to show the framework that we've been operating under as a working draft. You'll see on the left-hand side, there's current goals and policies. If there are none today, this is a brand-new policy and something that supports the implementation of the housing element. It's fully consistent with the housing element, it's nothing above and beyond. And you'll see up to the right, we have the reason for the revision as well as the necessity. Some of the stuff in the matrix is nice to have. Again, this is just a snippet. I wanted to highlight one of the more important operative policies, and that's New Policy 4.2. That's going to support the framework for rezoning and create the overlays. And again, they're fully consistent with the housing element. You'll see that we have the various focus areas, we have density ranges, and then we have a development limit established. One thing that I called out here that I think is important to emphasize is that these development limits are additive, they are not including pipeline units that we have. Pipeline is something that is entitled but not yet built, or currently in the pipeline being considered for entitlement. So those are above and beyond and separate from these development limits. The remainder of the policies really emphasize that the underlying land use are not changed, so you can maintain a commercial building. There's nothing that this overlay will affect in terms of property rights, it's simply adding an additional opportunity for a property owner to develop residential. And then lastly, there's a policy 4.7 proposed to allow transfer of development rights. You can transfer away commercial intensity, just as you can today, to a donor site if you like to redevelop that site for residential. Just note that again, these are a snippet. The full policy matrix is about eight pages, so there's more lengthy discussion in there if you so wish to read that. Because of the general plan amendment and the city charter section 423, obviously with the amount of units we're contemplating, the threshold for both density increases in the statistical areas as well as trips in the statistical areas are being exceeded, and therefore a ballot vote is required for this general plan amendment. As Simone mentioned, we're currently tracking for the November 5th, 2024 election. Now I'm going to move into overlay zoning and development standards. And just like the last one, I wanted to show you what has been posted online. So this has also been posted online in conjunction with the land use element update policies to solicit feedback from the community. We've gotten some stakeholder input, and that's why you see the messy highlights. This is exactly what is posted online today, to show areas of change that were responsive to the feedback that was received. I also want to note that the table has several footnotes that I did not include, just to make this a little less messy. For example, the height limitation in Newport Center, there's a footnote that calls out the site plane view ordinance, which I know has gotten a lot of attention along the way through input from the public. So just kind of stepping back, the gist of the overlay and zoning development standards is they're consistent with the housing element, they align with the land use element policies that we're proposing, they provide a process for the housing development to take place, they provide setbacks, heights, and parking requirements that allow the residential projects at the planned densities, and would also add that there's some area-specific standards, such as enhanced sound attenuation in the airport area, or contemplation of parks and trails in Coyote Canyon at the landfill site. Now I'm going to move into objective design standards. So objective design standards are really important to preserve and maintain local control. I'm sure you're aware of all the host of legislation that's come through to limit local subjectivity on housing development projects. So the objective design standards really help to provide a set of objective standards for housing projects to comply with, and in this case, we're looking to apply them to all projects with dens- And in this case, we're looking to apply them to all projects with densities of 20 dwelling units per acre or greater. So this would not apply to a duplex in Corona del Mar, for example. It's really intended for a multi-unit, low, medium, high-density project over 20 dwelling units per acre. I also want to note that this was posted in conjunction with the rest of the documents. We've received stakeholder feedback, including architects, developers, and property owners, and we've included that feedback in the revised iterations posted last month. And this is just a brief example. On the left-hand side, you'll see several rows. Those are topics that are covered in the objective design standards. This particular example is horizontal modulation, which is really just making sure that we have articulation on buildings. We want to maintain a quality of design in Newport Beach that does not allow for a shoebox, if you will, of no articulation. So this will require developers to comply with a certain percentage based on the density that they're proposing. Lastly, I'm going to cover the SEQA clearance and next steps, and that's all folded into the schedule you see in front of you. So, as Simone mentioned, we did release the draft program environmental impact report yesterday. We have a 46-day public comment period that's going to end on March 28th, with hearings following. One key thing is that your planned city council public hearing is expected or scheduled to take place on July 23rd, 2024, where we would bring you all final implementing documents, including all ballot resolutions that are required to get this over to the county.
And just one item I want to highlight. This is a very tight schedule for us, so what we want to do is just stay the course, meet our dates and deadlines, and bring forward to you the items for the public hearing on July 23rd. We don't have a lot of cushion in the schedule. Again, we're trying to meet that last day forward to call for the election, which is the August 9th date.
So I would just note, real quickly, I agree with you, and I appreciate that. Probably worth noting that I do have the ability, and so do, I think, it's three council members, have the ability to call for a special meeting before August 9th, but after July 23rd, if something were to come up. I'd prefer not to do that, but I just want to point out to everyone that we do have options should something arise. But again, I agree with you.
Thank you.
So then, as pointed out and emphasized, we have the last day to call the election and the ballot vote, and that concludes the expected next steps highlighted here. Just a focus on accountability. I know there's a lot of media and press, so I just took some snippets that I thought covered a range of what the new HCD Housing Accountability Unit can do in conjunction with the Attorney General. So the Beverly Hills example talks to a moratorium on building permits, so imagine your neighbor can't come in to get a pool permit because the state says no. Then, the other two for Huntington Beach and Fullerton highlight private and public lawsuits with the Attorney General Office. And lastly, I took a snippet from Santa Monica. Interestingly, they did not get a compliant housing element in time, and were met with 16 builders' remedy projects, which basically are just, you don't have a compliant housing element, so I can propose a housing project wherever I like. That happened in Santa Monica shortly after they missed that deadline. That article is from April. So those are just a few things that are happening if the city cannot meet the February 2025 mandated deadline to implement our housing element through these rezoning, land use element update, and everything that's required therein. I just want to emphasize for the public that these documents are available for review. We have shorthand links, so newportbeachca.gov/heimplementation and then newportbeachca.gov/sequa. This will allow the public to review all the documents I highlighted as the implementation actions, and then further allows for the public to access the draft environmental impact report. Comments are due by 5:00 PM on March 28th, 2024. That is driven by the SEQA document. It's not to say we won't accept feedback thereafter. So here's that key takeaway slide I mentioned. I just want to highlight a few things. So, the pipeline projects, again, those are not included in the total allocations in the focus areas. Those are additive units. They're brand-new considerations. They're not including those pipeline projects that are coming online through previously submitted entitlement applications. There are development limits in each focus areas. I threw Newport Center on there, for example, that will help confine developments to those areas to a certain limit, compliant with the housing elements, contemplated policy actions. And then, again, the draft documents are available for review. I did mention the coastal component. Those are not yet posted online, but I expect those to be posted online next week or shortly thereafter. They'll largely be simply consistent with the other documents that have been posted, again, with the housing element being the driving factor. I wanted to share, again, the public hearing, which, as we heard, may change to a special hearing if necessary, but we're tracking for July 23rd. The ballot vote will take place on November 5th, and then, again, our mandated deadline for implementation is February 2025. Again, I know that's a lot, but there's your summary slide. I'm happy to bring this back up, but that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Let's go ahead and leave that slide up. Thanks. Any questions before we go to public comment? That was great. Thank you. That's really helpful. All right, let's go out to public comment on this item. Do we have any public comments on this item?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Regarding the EIR, I would point out that there actually is a paper copy also. There is one at the City Hall. I just verified that it's there. And allegedly, there's a copy for the public to review at each of the libraries. I have not verified that, but some people find it more helpful to look at a paper copy. I don't know where they can find paper copies of the other documents, but they can see the EIR. The comment I was prepared to make is first, by November 5th, I believe, if I'm counting correctly, will be three years into the current eight-year cycle. And I'm not sure how we've been doing on producing housing during those first three years of the eight-year cycle. I don't think we've been doing too well on affordable housing, which is the difficult mandate to reach. At least in the airport area, I looked into that, which is the one area where we actually have an inclusionary requirement to build some affordable. And it looks like we're generating affordable housing compared to the total housing that's being approved at a rate of slightly under 10%. And that means to meet the affordable housing requirement, you take that number and multiply by 10, and that is a very large number of houses that we will have to add in the remaining seven years of this cycle. And then, I think I explained in writing, if you had a chance to read my comment, I have two differences of opinion with the proposal that's before you. One is the housing element is tied to a so-called opportunity list that is in the housing element, and the land use is changing the zoning, putting the overlay on those very specific properties. I don't think we have to do that. The housing element is identifying we have sufficient capacity to do that. It doesn't mean we have to limit the ability to add housing to those. And I would suggest it would be more fair and equitable to the property owners if, in an overlay district, anybody with a similar property is eligible. The current ones are just because they submitted a letter of interest, but somebody can change their mind. And if we don't allow those other people to do it without going through some kind of general plan amendment or something, we're tying our hands unnecessarily as the opportunities to add housing. And then, the second thing is we understood, I thought, when the Housing Element Committee was meeting, that there would be some kind of cap on these overlays, so that in the unlikely event we actually met our RENA quotas, that the opportunity for further using those would end. And I have found nothing in this that is implementing that sunset provision, which I think is very important to many of the residents, that we just don't have an open-ended, unlimited amount of housing that can be added, but just sufficient to meet our requirement. And when we meet that, the opportunities end. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Larry Tucker. I'm here to talk about just one of the five proposed overlay districts, and that's District Number Four, Newport Center. While the other four proposed overlay districts are Newport Beach real estate and therefore valuable, Newport Center is an entirely different market than anywhere else in the city, or for that matter, in the state, probably the country, and maybe even the world. It's a rare place, and I hope it's thoughtfully planned. The city is proceeding with changes to the land use element of the general plan, which it must do, as we've heard, to implement the housing element. However, because of Charter Section 423, the city has a deadline to complete the land use element changes by July, so that the matter can be placed on the ballot. However, the green light measure only applies to general plan changes, not to zoning changes like overlays. The overlay, the zoning changes required by the state to implement the housing element have a February 2025 deadline and are not subject to a green light vote. Among other things, the development standards shown in Table 216 of the overlay text, and I haven't seen the recent amendments, I think there might be some changes to that. Address height limits in Newport Center. Keep in mind that Newport Center has been planned mostly as a commercial district, but because the housing element, it will become mostly a residential district. Are the height limits that exist today throughout Newport Center and are based upon a commercial-centric plan the height limits that will yield the best possible plan for mostly residential projects going forward? I have to admit, when the question first dawned on me, I did not know the height limit of various blocks in Newport Center. The sites inventory in the certified housing element includes an assumed rezoned density for each parcel that may be used for housing. Each and every such parcel in Newport Center has an assumed density of 50 dwelling units. I didn't see any at 20. Maybe there's a few. Or there may even be 60 units if there's a density bonus that's sought. For comparison, Villas Fashion Island only has a density of 33 dwelling units per acre. The lower the height limit of a parcel, the more land area that will be covered by structures, and therefore, the less land area that will be available for setbacks, open space, or public or private amenities. It is possible that continuing to use the commercial plan height limits may generate the best plan for Newport Center, but it's not very hard to believe that it might not. So the council has time to sort the plan out for Newport Center. So I hope that the council asks the property owners what they would like to see and work with the property owners between now and a year from now, when you really do have to have the zoning part of the puzzle done. The zoning part of the puzzle does not need to be concluded by August. It has all the way until February. And if you have a situation where the property owners have to seek an individual change each time they have, bring a project forward, that means each of them are going to have to go through the entire entitlement process, including environmental documentation. So the best thing to do is to have the property owners work with the city, come up with a plan that's befitting the best real estate in the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor O'Neill and members of the council. My name is Nancy Scarborough. I think that as this progresses and we get closer to an election, you are going to want the community to help, the community groups, to help spread the word about this so that we can get this approved and not end up with the terrible consequences. I do believe that the community is concerned about the comment that Mr. Mosher made, where we limit this and how we stop it when we do reach our RENA allocations, which may not happen. But if it does, I think it would be reassuring for people to know how that ends. And so, if language could be developed that could be distributed, I think it would be helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, saying none, we'll... Saying one, maybe two.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I'm Deborah Allen Moore, and I'm the former president of the Harborview Hills Community Association, and here on behalf of our association, and about 250 homes in Harborview Hills that happen to overlook Newport Center. And I want to thank you for recognizing the Newport Center Site Plane Ordinance, which has been in force since before I moved to Harborview Hills, somewhere in 1958, I think it was originally negotiated between the Homes on the Hill and the Irvine Company, based on the concept that the Irvine Company owned all the land down here, and they also owned the land up in Harborview Hills. And they were selling those homes on leased land initially with views. And the concept was discussed, that you couldn't, wouldn't be fair to sell the same view twice. Sell the house with a view and then build something in front of it that blocked that view. So it was all negotiated and enacted, well, it's been enacted several times since then. But I appreciate your recognizing its long, historic relevance, and we appreciate helping you preserve that to the extent we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, council, members of staff. I'm here to show you hot off the presses in the new Navigator, so for everybody, the new Navigator's out. We have a really cool event. On April 11th, there will be a docent-led tour of the plant habitat, so the native plants at Civic Center Park. It'll be led by Sherman Gardens botanist Kyle Chesborough. So if anybody's met Kyle, he makes plants and birds and bees and bunnies really exciting. So we encourage you all to come. It's at 10 o'clock. It's free. I want to thank Robin Grant for helping us kind of move this forward, along with the Art Commission, Arts Commission, which has taken on the sponsorship, because the long-term goal is we build out a group of docents with Sherman, who can talk about the plants and the statues together and be available for events, and really help people understand that story. Also, April 21st, Sherman Gardens is having a native plant day at Sherman Gardens. Tree of Life will be selling plants, and there will be an indigenous plant speaker to talk about the use of plants in indigenous communities in Southern California. And finally, on May 5th, there will be a garden tour from the Orange County Native Plant Society, and we will include Civic Center Park as a destination and list other parks in Newport for people to visit. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Laura. I know you came in. We were, right now, we're talking about the housing element, but we'll count that toward the non-agenda public comments. No problem. I got you. So anyway, do we have any other public comments on the study session item number four? All right, we'll bring it back. So, the points about the question on the cap, or whatever we want to call it, they're valid, they're fair questions, because I know that during the housing element discussion, that was something that Chair Tucker, who also spoke, brought up regularly. So, you know, how do we want to discuss that one?
So, we think we do have it. We will definitely go back and review the language. Just trying to pull up the, just a snippet of that land use element there. So we talked about accommodating up to 2577 units in the airport area, as an example. We could definitely craft language either in the land use element or in the zoning code. We understand that was very clear by the committee members, and so we'll just have more definite language to address that.
All right. So we have a handful of questions, comments from council, so we'll start with Councilmember Wagon.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Simone, Larry Tucker had brought up that kind of comment about engaging with, you know, landholders. Where are we, are that, are, is the timing, as he mentioned, you know, something that needs to be done before we go to the vote, or is it something that can be done after the vote?
It's, so right now, what I want to make sure that we do is we just continue staying on track is what we're working on. So we have land use, zoning, and design standards. We could always do concurrently on the height. Mr. Tucker's talking about the height, engaging those property owners, so we can definitely do that after the vote. Wait, but, you know, again, Mr. Tucker looked at February as kind of like your deadline, because after February, we're supposed to be implemented, and if you don't have that, the correct height in place, then it may be a limiting factor. It's never the end of the world, right? Even if you go past a little bit of February, you can change that height. We have the EIR, draft EIR, so that's our SEQA document. So we want to kind of stick to the plan that we have now. If we want to do concurrently, start talking about height, break off, and to have that discussion with the propeneers, we could definitely do that.
Yeah, I mean, the ship has sailed on density. It's just how it's all going to look.
Correct.
And we want to masterplan this in a way that makes Newport, you know, the best we can, if we've got the cards that were dealt from the state. And I think, you know, engaging with the Irvine Company, you know, might be a good, you know, an idea to understand what they maybe are visioning, and, you know, what's going to be some pretty lucrative property there, and maybe figure out how that be some pretty lucrative property there, and maybe figure out how that intertwines with Newport Housing Trust that was created too. And, you know, maybe the, there can't be any low-income housing in that area, but maybe they can help fund that housing trust that can then find that type of, use that funding to then build something else in the city, in these other areas that we have, to develop that low-income, that low-income housing. And for Deborah Allen out there, don't be worried, I, you know, I don't think Larry was talking about the, anything on the site plane there, as the Irvine Company up the hill, that wouldn't block your view, but I do think that his comments are very valid. And when we look to the future of the city, this area here is going to be that focal point, and we just need to master plan that in a very good way, that we can take advantage of what the cards were dealt, but do this in the right way so it works, because I think if you have a certain type of housing there, it's going to be this work, live, play style. It's not going to be this heavy density, you know, tons of cars. These are going to be folks living there that are likely going to work there, they're going to eat there, they're going to shop there. It's all built in here in this Newport Center. So designing that in the appropriate way, I think, is really incumbent on us to do that when we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Blom.
Thank you. And I want to thank staff for the ridiculously heavy lift of getting this done. The timetable is near impossible, and we appreciate everything you guys are doing to make that happen. I want to talk briefly about the two main districts we're talking about here, the airport district and Newport Center, and I really appreciate the comments that some members of the public have made about caps, but I have zero support for something like that, especially when we're talking about districts like the airport district and Newport Center, where we don't want these pieces of housing in any of our R1 zones, in any of the more specific neighborhoods. We're really looking to put these numbers in areas, and it might just happen that we find better density in these areas, where we can get more RINA numbers in them, and not move them to the other districts that are more neighborhood-based. And so I really want to caution us against this idea of caps, because when we're talking about building out something that is, in essence, a commercial district or an industrial district, and we're putting more housing in there and creating a neighborhood in its own effect, well, that's great. That's what we're looking for, and that's the way we get to answer kind of these RINA numbers. The moment we are putting caps on it, we are stopping the development in those areas, and we're deciding that, okay, we've hit enough. But California's going to come back down, and the next time, they're going to tell us we got to put it somewhere else. And so we're going to constantly go through this cycle. So I think it's important for us to be able to develop where the natural curve is anyway, where we have the ability to make money, and where we have the ability to create neighborhoods that aren't in existence now, because we're going to have to start looking somewhere. And so this idea of a cap on something that could be both profitable and create something for the future is really important for us. And I think, you know, Mr. Tucker had a good point about when we look at height, Newport Center is our city center. And, you know, we've never looked towards vertical integration in a lot of what we do, especially in our housing piece, but that is the future, and that is the only way we get to be in compliance with the state. And so, you know, I think we've done a lot of work to get here. This has been years and years in the making. Trying to start adding constraints on it now really adds some difficulty as we move forward. And so, you know, I can't possibly support a cap on any of this. I think that Newport has its own caps anyway, already in place with the cost of our land and the people that are even willing to develop here. And so I just want us to look forward to how we create a neighborhood, and sometimes it's not with more constraints, it's with the active and intelligent growing of those areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kleiman.
Yeah, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank our community development department. Ben did a great job of outlining kind of all the things that can happen when you don't, when you don't comply. So I really just want to emphasize the importance of having a compliant housing element and sort of staying below the radar. And I know you've been, as Councilmember Blom said, handling this heavy lift alongside of all of your other normal duties, as well as trying to digest all of the new legislation that has been coming at us pretty quickly. So just a thank you, and again, I know inevitably, at the end of the line, we're going to have a lot of people come out of the woodwork saying, you know, no one asked me, and this has been a very long and a very public process, so I just want, want to acknowledge that as well. There's been a lot of opportunity for public input. And again, just thank CDD for all the great work done here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Avery.
Yeah, I appreciate very much your work on this, and it just, to me, demonstrates a city that's got its act together compared to so many other cities, and I think every resident should be very thankful for that. It's critical that we do everything we can to get this right, that we meet the deadlines, which, you know, we're, just today, I've been given confidence that we're going to do it one way or another. I have a couple of questions. This has been going on for a number of years, and I'm sure you've talked to property owners, and what's your sense of, have we done surveys, or just to get a sense of whether they are interested at all or not, or are they raring to go? What's your confidence level, and are we looking at probably 20 years to get to these numbers?
I think, I think that's a very good point. So I think there's a lot of interest from the property owner community. I think it's all about the numbers. You got to run your performer and to see if it's worth tearing down the office building, which may be paid off and has residual income or passive income, and then now you're going to develop a housing project and you have loan on that. So every project is unique and different. I think there is absolutely a lot of interest from the property owners, but everybody's going to be in a unique position. I think when you ask about full buildout of what you see on the RINA, I project at least minimum 20 years for a full buildout, maybe even longer, depending on how the markets go and construction costs and everything. So it's a, it's a long buildup process, and, you know, we haven't adopted the land use element or the zoning overlay, so none of the RINA's been activated yet. So we still got, got to get this stuff adopted and approved and through the votes, and then, then we'll start seeing more of that production from the, from the RINA side, and then we'll start working on the next housing element.
Right. Yeah, there's a long road ahead. And just one comment, I completely agree with Mr. Blom's desire to protect neighborhoods, and I know we all want that. I don't think there's anyone in the room that doesn't want that. So we're going to hear from folks, and I'm concerned about the rate of change. So, you know, obviously, a long timeline is good for us to sort of digest it, you know, not just, but just sort of emotionally, this is going to impact a lot of things in this town, and we add this many units here, so it'll be just a new normal.
Yeah.
But it's also exciting, and I'm very excited about our ability to, to come up with plans, to try and do what we can to encourage places and services where these units are going in, where people don't have to get in a car, and where they can have a live, work, play deal. But that's really not, it's hard for us to control that, right? We can do it through some zoning, I suppose, but you can't tell property owners what to do with their big parcel, you know, to put in a market or to put in some visitor-serving, residential-serving businesses.
Correct.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grant.
I just have a point of clarification. When we were talking earlier, and now again here on the dais about, I don't know if it's caps or sunset provision, or whatever that looks like, we're talking about the concept that we overplanned for meeting our RINA numbers, so that we had flexibility within the whole city to accommodate developments. We planned for more than almost 5,000 units. And I think that the discussion, if I, I thought that the discussion of a sunset provision was when we meet our RINA allocation, let's say in a hypothetical world, it didn't take 20 years, let's say it only took five years hypothetically, that we would then have a sunset provision after we met our requirement, which is at this juncture, almost 12% of our existing housing, you know, that's already in play in our city. But are we talking about individual caps in, it almost sounds like on the dais here, and maybe in the conversation with you a little bit, we're talking about caps in individual areas, that there's never been a discussion about that as opposed, other than how much is overlaid?
So a lot of this generates from when we have our housing committee, housing committee members are working and trying to identify housing opportunity sites. And what you see on your screen right now, where you're talking about the airport area there, where it could accommodate 2,577 units, and then if you go down three bullet points, or two more bullet points down to Newport Center, it could accommodate 2,400-plus housing units. So I guess my question to the council, and I think the direction we got a couple of years ago, was that the, the housing committee wanted to say that we could accommodate this much housing units, 2,500, and no more in that particular area. So I guess the question goes back to the council, is that, and that's what we studied in the EIR, so we really wouldn't want to do anything more right now, but the direction was from the housing committee, and then even the council supported back then, the previous council, was that it could accommodate this maximum, no more. We're not putting caps on income categories, just total buildout, not including density bonus. This does not include density bonus. It's a, again, this is a little bit of a complicated subject. So if the council, the majority wants to change how we look at the total buildout, and I think that staff would be a bit further direction, but the whole idea was build what you need, and this is what we've planned, and no more. And that was kind of the premise we've been going on.
So the sunset provision would be when we hit that 4,850 mark, as opposed to more that's already in this plan, is that what you mean?
Well, the, the planning areas have 20, I think all we've planned over 10,000 units.
Right.
So in each planning area, if we hit that allocation, you couldn't build any more housing units in that area. You'd have to go to another planning area and build those housing units. That's why we have the housing, planning areas all spread out throughout the city.
Okay.
All right. Any others? Oh, good. Oh, we've got a long road ahead of us, so appreciate you showing us the plan. All right. So we'll be moving into public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Does anyone have any public comments?
Hi. I have a couple of different questions. One, I was, it was brought to my attention, some city council, like laws that you guys have made, I forget what they're called, one of which is that you can't brush your teeth in a bathroom, that's illegal, or if you get a cut, you can't clean it off. Like if your kid gets a cut, you can't clean it off in a bathroom without getting cited and subsequently arrested if you can't pay the fine, which unfortunately, in my situation, you can't. I was wondering what it takes to actually make a change in that. I know that there's been many community members that I've spoken to that are upset about this as well.
So it's time for public comment, not for questions, but keep going.
Oh, okay. And then I, I was also, you know, interested in trying to figure out what it would take to actually get you guys to open up a homeless shelter here in the Newport Beach area, because all the other shelters are full.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that was it.
Got it. Thank you. All right. Next speaker, please.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher, and I, first I wanted to confirm Councilmember Grant did understand the comment I was trying to make, that the, the plan of the city staff has caps for the individual areas. I was not talking about those. I was talking about a citywide off switch, or whatever you would call it. If the airport area developed all of the RINA requirement that we needed, then the other allowances in the other areas would be switched off until we had a new RINA requirement. That's citywide off switch is what I'm talking about, not the individual caps, and that's what the people expected and did not see in this proposal. The comment I wanted to make is, your last meeting was the February 3rd planning session, and at that planning session, one of the many, many topics that you heard that went by fairly quickly was about our city's ability to meet the state requirement for diverting organic waste from landfills. They expect us by next year to be diverting 75% of the organic waste from the landfill. And I need to apologize to the, to the mayor, I kind of misunderstood his comment about being deeply involved in this for many, many years, and thought there was still an ongoing subcommittee of the council overseeing this. What I would like to suggest is perhaps we do need some more continuing oversight of this issue. And the reason I bring that up is at that meeting, we were, some of us were celebrating the claim that in our three-cart residential curbside program that we've had for just a little over a year, going on two years, we're already up to 91% diversion. And I personally find that very unlikely, and the reason I find it unlikely is this morning, I was at the monthly study session of the Costa Mesa Sanitary District, who for 11 years has had green carts in Costa Mesa and in parts of Newport Beach that they provide the CRNR trash service to, and despite sending out quarterly newsletters and encouraging people to sort their organics from their other waste, as near as I can make out, they're currently getting about 60% compliance. So about 60% of the organic waste is going in their green cart, and about 40% of it is still going in their black mixed cart. They have just two carts, and the reason they can achieve the 75% compliance is because they send that black cart still to the so-called Materials Recovery Facility, the MRF, where they sort through that and recover, they claim, 75% of that other 40%. So that gets up to a high number. But we have the three-cart system, and our blacks, which probably has also a large amount of organic material in it, we have heard goes directly to the landfill. So if that was happening in the parts serviced by the Costa Mesa Sanitary District, the diversion rate there is about 60%. I find it very unlikely we could be achieving 91%. So the whole issue may need a little more transparency and oversight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, seeing none. Couple of follow-ups on how to change an ordinance, that's our city attorney right there, and he can be helpful on that. And then on the discussion about shelters, we, in terms of the placement, we had looked at that years ago, and it's probably worth going back and seeing some of the discussions we had on that. All right, so we're going to move into closed session. Before we do so, does anyone have a conflict to announce?
I will recuse myself for a personal matter to avoid the appearance of bias.
All right. Mr. Trump?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council will adjourn to closed session to meet with the city's real property negotiators regarding negotiators, negotiations with David Bonson, related to the property at 883 West 15th Street, which is currently leased by Pacific Christian, and that's all I've set forth on the agenda under item 4A.
All right, we'll stand in recess and reconvene at 5:30 for the regular meeting. Thanks. We're going to reconvene for the February 13th, 2024 regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
City Attorney, do we have a closed session report?
Thank you, there's no closed session report this evening.
All right. Tonight, we're going to have the invocation from Reverend Matthew Hambrik from First United Methodist Church of Costa Mesa, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Wagen.
All right. Thank you for inviting me to be with you tonight. Let us pray. Eternal God, we give you thanks for this holy moment we call life. We thank you, we get to spend it in such a beautiful place with, with sand and sky and sea and friends and community. We thank you for the people who make this place such a wonderful place to be. We ask that you would be present this evening with everyone here as we make decisions to benefit our community. May you inspire us and guide us always. Grant, that we may go into this time in the strength of your spirit to give ourselves for others. Amen.
Please join me as we salute our nation's flag. Ready, begin.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
All right. Now is the time for city council announcements and oral reports from city council on committee activities. Councilmember Kleiman.
Thank you. Okay. I want to start by acknowledging and congratulating our Newport Beach Fire Department in the back there for earning the designation of a Class 1 department, a prestigious rating from the Insurance Services Office. the Insurance Services Office that only two other cities in the county share. I also had the honor of participating in the Junior Life Guard Beam Signing, another shout-out to the back of the room, and getting very excited to see that project nearing completion. I attended the Police Department promotional and swearing-in ceremony along with my colleagues up here. One of my favorite privileges of being part of this council especially, as I've witnessed, my counterparts grow into well-earned leadership positions alongside many of us up here. And I also attended the SCAG Regional Council and Policy Meetings, as well as the UCI Countering Hate Summit with many of us, our colleagues up here as well.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Blom?
Nothing. Thank you.
Councilmember Avery?
Yeah, I also attended the promotion swearing-in ceremony for the Police Department, and I know all of us up here, whether it's all of our public safety folks, when you see that, you're just reminded of the excellence of the folks that we have protecting this community, the professionalism and the sharpness and the comments, and just, everybody is just on the ball. It's really something. And as a resident, I feel very fortunate to live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Weygen?
No report this evening.
Councilmember Grant?
Just a few items. I want to thank staff for completing the important work of our planning session that we had over the last few weeks. It's a really instrumental meeting, so important to the public to see how we craft the framework for enhancing and protecting our community each year. So again, thank you for all the hard work on that planning session. I also want to thank the Airport Working Group for their work throughout the year. They had their annual meeting, and I really want to just give a special thank you to them for being such longstanding productive members in our community and protecting the safe and productive utilization of our airport. It's so important for our quality of life here in the city of Newport Beach, and those people who work with the Airport Working Group are really longtime volunteers, and they're greatly appreciated. I was able to give a city update to the members of the East Bluff Homeowners Association at their recent town hall, also attended with councilmember Kleiman, Mayor, and Mayor Protem, the Countering Hate Program at UCI, along with hundreds of other electeds and educators and community leaders. That was a wonderful opportunity to understand how we can build alliances and form solutions to violence in our community and beyond. So thank you to UCI for providing that opportunity for us. Also really enjoyed the wall signing at the soon-to-be-open Junior Life Guards Building. It's a beautiful structure, and it's worth, when it's done, a trip down to A Street to see what it's all about, because it's an absolutely wonderful new addition to the infrastructure in our city, and it'll be well-used by the guards and then by the public throughout the year. So we appreciate the long wait that we've had for it, and we appreciate all of the volunteers, donors, people in our city that have helped make that a reality. That infrastructure will live on for years and benefit all of us, including the youth in our city, which is so important. And then finally, well, two things. Last night, I was able to attend the Lunar New Year Celebration at the Nixon Library with other electeds in our community, and I do take that as an important opportunity to reach out beyond our city and form alliances with other electeds and understand the different communities that all come together in Orange County to celebrate. It was a wonderful celebration. And then finally, of course, our Police Department promotional ceremony. Those are amazing. I have been attending those for many, many years because I was on the Civil Service Board and able to have the opportunity to attend then, and now as a council member, it's a real privilege. So thank you for including us.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I just want to start by thanking Megan McNulty. She's on the board of the Newport Beach Arts Foundation. They hosted an event that I attended that was well-attended, and it was a fun event. I also had the pleasure of going to Washington, DC, on my first lobbying trip on behalf of the city of Newport Beach, so with our Public Works Director, Dave Webb. We spent forty-eight hours in DC talking with many electeds, congressional leaders, senate leaders, and federal agencies, working on harbor dredging and sand replenishment. We know that our beaches were impacted with a lot of erosion this last winter, so working on Stage Thirteen that were currently being funded and trying to get Stage Fourteen going for the big sand replenishment. So that was a fun and eye-opening experience for sure. The Newport Beach Foundation, our Distinguished Citizen Program, is launching, next class, our tenth class will be in May, so applications are available online now if you want to go check that out and apply. I also did attend the Countering Hate Event at UCI, and thought that was a wonderful opportunity to continue to workshop what's going on and what we can be done. And I was at the police swearing-in yesterday. We got thirteen members in our police force sworn in, which was great. And the Junior Guards Building, the Beam Signing, another pleasure, so lots going on.
Great. Won't repeat a lot of that. I appreciate folks listening already. I was able to speak to the Rotary Club and also the Friends of Oasis about things going on inside the city, and I enjoyed celebrating some folks who've done a lot of great work inside the city at those meetings. All right. Oh, and also for the next meeting, given the reminder on our, on the consent calendar, it's probably time for us to A-one the formation of an ad hoc committee for negotiations on the expiration of the VNB contract. So I'd like to A-one that one to start that up. All right. Speaking of A-one, next is matters which councilmembers have asked to be placed on a future agenda, which is a non-discussion item. Consider adopting an ordinance that bans the sale and distribution of kratum. Is that how you pronounce it? Maybe? All right. At kratum in the city of Newport Beach. So anyone, will just raise your hands if you'd like to bring it back.
G unanimous, seven-zero.
All right. So now we'll move into consent calendar. Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which councilmembers may pull items from the consent calendar for a discussion. Those are items one through twelve. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must leave comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a councilmember, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine, will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Councilmembers have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommended in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
All right. Councilmembers, do we have any items to pull or any conflicts to declare? Councilmember Kleiman?
I'd like to pull item number twelve, please.
Item number twelve. Councilmember Blom?
I have a conflict on item six due to real property at two-two-four Marine. Wait, eight, eight. I have a conflict on item eight due to real property.
Okay. Councilmember Avery?
I have none.
Councilmember.
It was.
Which one does he have a conflict on? Okay. Councilmember Weygen?
I have none.
Councilmember Grant?
None.
Councilmember, or Mayor Protem?
None.
All right. And I'll pull item number four. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, we'll move the consent calendar except for item number one, item number twelve, which was pulled by Councilwoman Kleiman, and then item number four, which was pulled by Mayor O'Neill, and then a recusal from item number six for a real property conflict for Councilwoman Noah Blom.
All right. Do we have a second? Second by Councilmember Blom. We'll go to a public comment on the items that have not been pulled from the consent calendar. Do we have any public comment on those items? All right. Bring it back. Okay.
All right. Hi. So if something was pulled, is there a chance to comment on that later?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
So are you talking about item number four or twelve?
Twelve.
Okay. We will be separately discussing it, and I'll call for public comment during that time.
All right. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks. Okay. All right. Bring it back. Let's go ahead and vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles for item three, ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash two, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, approving an amendment to the Corporate Plaza Plan, Community Development Plan, PC seventeen, for a medical office located at twenty Corporate Plaza, and ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash three, approving a development agreement for a medical office located at twenty Corporate Plaza. Show of hands, all in favor? That is seven-zero. Thank you.
Okay. Go to the items that have been pulled. So we'll start with item number four. I don't need a staff report on this one. So the reason I pulled this one is I don't fully understand it, and so I wanted to see if I could understand it a little bit better. So a couple of things. There's been a lot of discussion in the news about tourism spending and oversight, and part of the reason for a lot of the discussion was really bad actions taken over in the city of Anaheim. But one of the things that came out of those discussions was a very long audit from the state of California. And one of the things in the discussion on the audit is a series of checklists for how cities ought to be doing oversight of their contracts with their, either their Chamber of Commerce or their, or their agencies. And so it would be, it's worth just taking a quick understanding of what this is, given the amount of scrutiny going on right now. And so I'll just say, you know, if you look at page fifteen of the state auditor report that talks about this checklist, I'm not sure we have, we've actually complied with a lot of the things that the state would be looking for if they came in and looked at Newport. So there are a handful of things that ought to be taken a look at. But on this one, the T-bids have been around for a while. If they want to move to a voluntary organization, great, have at it. Less is more on this one. But I just don't understand what the new organization is and how it'll interact with the organization that actually receives taxpayer money, and that's why I'm trying to understand this one. So as I understand it, you have Newport Beach and Company that's kind of, in the org chart, it's above Visit Newport Beach. Visit Newport Beach is the company that receives our eighteen percent of TOT, and according to the very large glossy thing that we had received from Visit Newport Beach or Newport Beach and Co. a while back, it's also the, it's also what receives the T-bid money. So on the budget side, the T-bid, the budget was a little over four million dollars for the fiscal year twenty-four budget for the T-bid. And then on the TOT side, it's about five-point-eight million dollars on the budget. But out of the Visit Newport Beach side, two-point-nine million dollars comes out as a line item for fees and contributions to Newport Beach and Company. And then of that two-point-nine that goes into the Newport Beach and Company, the entire budget for Newport Beach and Company is three-point-one million. So about ninety-four percent of the Newport Beach and Company revenue comes from Visit Newport Beach, which is the taxpayer, which is where tax dollars come from on the TOT. So my understanding is the city of Newport Beach has a person on the board, the executive board for Visit Newport Beach, but not on the executive board for Newport Beach and Company. And if I understand the tax returns correctly, the executive compensation is almost entirely, if not entirely, at Newport Beach and Company, not Visit Newport Beach. So we don't actually have a say on the executive compensation side of that, or how the money is spent by Newport Beach and Company, which is, like I said, it's about two-point-nine million dollars of taxpayer money that's being transferred over there. So I'm trying to understand, when we now are getting rid of the T-bid, which I saw quotes in the Orange County Register this morning saying the reason for it is to get rid of bureaucracy. Fine. My understanding is that we were, from the staff report, it was costing twelve thousand dollars a year. Doesn't seem like a lot of bureaucracy, but okay. If that's why they wanted to get rid of it, fine. But what are they, are they using, will this new voluntary organization be a standalone? Are they going to be administered by one of the taxpayer organizations? And if that's the case, are there, is there an oversight problem now that is, do we have issues with the, with what the state had been looking at in Anaheim and asking and expecting cities to do with their taxpayer dollars? So who, how does the, who does this voluntary organization now work with? Or again, if it's standalone and voluntary, great, have at it. But if they're using taxpayer dollars to do this, I'm not sure I understand the structure, and I'd like to make sure that we're at least, now that we're certainly on notice with a state audit on this, that we're actually paying attention better than perhaps previously. So that's why I'm trying to understand this. So what is this?
So my understanding is this is going to be a completely private organization that's a nonprofit, where it'll be voluntary membership among the different hotels, and they're going to, in essence, self-assess themselves to come up with the money for marketing and promotions. But the city won't have any involvement. It won't be what we have today, which is, you know, the T-bid that you're talking about, where you have Visit Newport Beach being the owners' association and the city having oversight and an agreement with Visit Newport Beach. The city won't be a party at all to this new entity that they're forming.
And so does it have any relationship with either the companies that receive taxpayer dollars, though?
So I don't know whether they will on a going-forward basis or not. I would imagine that there is going to be some overlap. You know, they're basically trying to do some private marketing for the hotels, kind of do the same thing that they're doing with the Tourism Business Improvement District but on the private side. And given that Visit Newport Beach is doing a lot of marketing for the hotels in general with the TOT money, I would imagine that there's going to be some type of overlap with the entities, but I don't know what that will be.
So Councilmember Weygen, do you have anything?
Yeah, we were handed in our packet this big, long file here, received after agenda printed. I just, I was kind of reading it, and it says additionally increasing our assessment from three percent to five percent. Is that something that they bill to themselves? Or is that something that's, when you stay at the hotel, you see, you know, your itemized receipt? Will that be a line item in the occupant, the person who's staying at the hotel? Or is that just something they're changing a structure internally on?
So we did have some discussions with them on that point, because right now it shows up as basically being, you know, a T-bid, you know, charge that's on the bills. And we told them on a going-forward basis they would not be able to designate as some type of city type of fee or tax or anything of that nature. It'll be something that they need to handle on their own and that they're advised by their legal counsel, because we're not representing them and not advising them. But we made it very clear to them that it shouldn't appear to be a city fee or a city tax.
But that, that's just like a resort fee or any type of fee that goes on the bill that just is on them to administer, and their group kind of has to sign off on all of them to agree that that's what they want to do to tax themselves.
Yeah, they have a very good understanding of it.
And you'll just be double-checking that to make sure it doesn't come across as that, as a fee from the city or the way that it's presented, or how, what's your ability to kind of manage?
Well, we put them on notice that, you know, they're no longer associated with the city, and it can't appear to be a fee or tax. You know, we're not going to have any oversight of it, but I imagine we'll eventually get some type of bills from them and then be able to see kind of how they're presenting it. I'm sure they'll provide us with that information if we're asked.
Okay. Thanks.
Got it. And then the agreement, so we've got multiple agreements. One of them is for the TOT, and one of them is for the T-bid administration. Just making sure if we, you know, if we dissolve this, which I think we probably should, but if we dissolve this, if we needed to go back and look at any records or audits or anything like that, are there audit rights that continue past what the decision we're making tonight?
Yeah, so you're absolutely right. So we have two separate agreements with Visit Newport Beach. One agreement is with them as being the owners' association that's designated to basically manage the T-bid. That's one set of agreements, kind of what's applicable tonight. And there's a second set of agreements between us and, oh, city of Newport Beach and Visit Newport Beach for general marketing. Under the T-bid agreement, that goes through the end of December of twenty-twenty-four. They still have obligations to fulfill under that agreement, and we have rights to documents. And also, they'll be providing us with an audit, kind of a closing audit of what happened with the T-bid. So that agreement will continue until the end of twenty-twenty-four, and we have rights under that agreement.
Okay. Councilmember Grant?
Just continuing in the line of thought that the mayor was considering, as far as I understand, okay, so we contract with Newport Beach and Company or Visit Newport Beach, and I think we're the only client of one or both of those companies. Is that correct? I'm just wondering now, I mean, is there any preclusion? It seems like now the MAP would be, you know, this new nonprofit would be, I don't know if it would be completely independent of those companies, or maybe that's sort of like a client relationship? And would there be anything to preclude that anyway? I mean...
So the MAP company is a nonprofit company, so it's its own entity. Now, whether they have some interactions with Visit Newport Beach or Newport Beach and Company as far as agreements go and things of that nature, I think there will be some type of overlap. There'll probably be overlap with maybe, you know, some of the members that are involved with this new organization that's been designated as MAP. You know, I don't really know how it, you know, spins out as they move along, but I'd imagine, you know, they're all kind of doing the same thing, right? They're doing the marketing for the hotels, and then, you know, we're giving them eighteen percent of our TOT to do marketing in general for Newport Beach. So, you know, there's a lot of the same players involved and a lot of the same, you know, type of tasks that are being performed. So I would imagine there's going to be overlap.
I mean, I guess the concern that's sort of underlying this is that we want to make sure that there's not a dilution of the monies being paid by the city towards, you know, obligations to the city for work or, you know, to produce something for the city. And I, I don't know that there's any reason why Visit Newport Beach couldn't have another client and, you know, that that, they couldn't accommodate more than one. I don't know. I'm just, I want to make sure that that's not what's happening.
So I think the mayor made a good point about, you know, forming, you know, potentially forming a new group to take a look at what the terms of the agreement are going to be. If you decide to go under the same structure going forward with the marketing agreement with Visit Newport Beach. And maybe, you know, tidying those, those provisions up so that, that you can ensure that the money is being appropriately spent.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, so Councilmember Grant, you, you hit it exactly right. I probably should have been more explicit. I, that, the reason I'm, the reason I'm asking is exactly what you're describing. I, if you have a, if you have a separate client, obviously, it's a, it's a, so Visit Newport Beach exists, as far as I can tell, solely to market Newport Beach and, and solely essentially to take the TOT, formerly T-bid now, but it's about to go away, the TOT and make sure that they're doing exactly what we would ask them to be doing as essentially the sole client. But if, if they have another client on this, especially one that has, you know, in theory somewhere between four and multiple millions more potentially coming in, I do worry a little bit about having two masters on that, right? So having the city on the one side, who would like to, to focus in on the whole city and the whole, and everyone involved in this. And then a smaller group, although very large and sophisticated players in the, in this, bringing in multiple millions more into it. And I'm not sure how, at that point, for example, I don't know how to break out the administrative costs. So for example, that $2.9 million that gets transferred from the TOT only, which was not a problem before. Well, I mean, the transparency side is a problem, but the $2.9 million, it's not that much of a problem from, from the TOT side, but zero from the T-bid side is now going to be a problem if the N B or Newport Beach and Company is doing a substantial amount of work or the same amount of work or even more work for an outside nonprofit, but not paying for, not, you know, not paying half at least if that's, if it's half the work. So, so this is why I'm asking the questions, because there's a lot of money and it's a lot of taxpayer money. And so I, again, I have no problem moving forward tonight. It's just, these are questions that I think are worth asking and I'm not sure tonight would be the appropriate forum to figure out, to dig into all of this. But we ought to find out what the arrangement's going to be, because again, it, it is a problem if we are paying for all of the overhead and the nonprofits not as part of the self-assessment, given the budget that we've seen already. So it's, it's going to be worth, worth us digging in and finding that one out. Anyway, any other questions? That was sort of my point. I didn't understand what this is. I guess I still don't understand what this is going to be. But at least for tonight, I guess we're, we'll, we'll talk about dissolving the T-bid. Okay. Any public comments on this item?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, first to Councilmember Wagon's question of, of this long last minute addition that we have to the agenda packet, on page two of it, the invitation to, to become members of the MAP. The kind of second paragraph says, "Our attorney has also said that if you list 'T-bid,'" in quotes, "on your guests' folios, you can keep using that term if it is easier for you." So it sounds like they're being invited to still say that this is a T-bid charge, the new 5% imposed, I guess, by the city council. My main comment about this is I never quite understood what the T-bid was about. My assumption was a, a T-bid can force some members to be, people to be members who don't want to be. But this has always been just people who wanted to be members of it. And I assumed that the reason they wanted to be members of it is being a government sanctioned or created entity allowed them to do something that they could not do privately. Might've had to do with antitrust laws or collusion or something like that. I don't know. And so I would wonder if that was a motivation and how now they can do something that previously required government sanction to do it. And I also think the mixing of all these companies together is more than just a question of finances, but there's also going to be a conflict of who the money is being used for, whether it's actually being used for general marketing of the city or specifically for this interest group. And then finally, as to your action that you feel comfortable taking tonight, in the resolution, you are agreeing with the presentation from Visit Newport Beach that they are ending on January, on January 31st, I guess, with no assets. And yet it appears that they have four and a half, 4.6 million dollars of cash that they are transferring to this new organization, where the state law says that when a T-bid expires, the outstanding revenue needs to be refunded, not passed on to some other organization. So I would be, if I was in your place, less comfortable with the action you're being asked to take tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
So members of the council, first of all, it says in the budget, in the staff report that there will be, if this is passed, a hearing on March 26th. So members of the public who are interested can attend that study session on March 26th. I would congratulate you and urge you to really look carefully at all of these finances, because I've been commenting on the Visit Newport Beach finance reporting since 2015. So this is my email of 2015 and my email from 2019 and other times in the Finance Committee. And while it has improved and we now have better general ledger data when we get the Visit Newport Beach reports, you are correct that over 50% of the budget in some cases was for N B and Company fees of $2 million. So there's a lot of money at play here. The other piece that is not clear to me from the report is it says the fiscal impact of this action is the annual assessment rate of 3% was, was in place. It was collected by the city. The city incurred about $12,000, $40,000 in costs, plus or minus, to administer four hours a month in collections. There's no statement here of what will actually happen with that money. Does that mean that 3% goes away and the next time I go to a hotel or send my family, it'll cost less? Or where is that money going to be directed? You know, and that may be, that's part of this discussion. So this is an ongoing topic. There are a lot of great things that happen with Visit Newport Beach. And I had the pleasure of going to the Rose Bowl and seeing a whole bunch of my neighbors, which was really cool. But I think the financial oversight is really important, because we want to have that clarity so that everyone understands and nobody gets a phone call one night going, why is Newport Beach in this situation? So if anyone has any questions about my comments on it over the years, they can look at the meetings from 2015 and 2019. And in the meantime, thank you for your efforts on this and for all the people that will end up on your committee.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill, members of the city council. I'm Gary Sherwin, the present CEO of Visit Newport Beach. So maybe I can offer some clarity here, because it's, it's a fairly straightforward proposition that we're talking about. Little quick history here. Back in 08, during the Great Recession, the hotels got together and they said, "We appreciate the efforts that the city gives us in terms of funding, but in order to secure business, to get out of the Great Recession and to compete in the group marketing arena, we need to do more. We need to spend more. We need to have more feet on the ground, going around the country to bring meetings and conventions to the city." This discussion came from our largest hotels. And at that particular meeting during our strategic plan, they said, "We need to come up with a new funding source without going to the city necessarily for the money, but working through the city to, in order to enhance our group marketing efforts." And that's really why the T-bid was created, was to enhance our meetings and conventions. The hotels are dependent on that. And when we started the T-bid, we started out initially with seven properties. Then Island Hotel came in, the Dunes came in, we've, we have nine properties. That's the only, those are the only properties that are involved in this. It started out at 2%, went for five years. They said, "This is great. Let's take it to 5%." It went to five, or excuse me, it went to 3%. And now at the end of January, we are coming to the end of the T-bid. That's the, that's what the law requires, we, we sunset. About six months ago, we met with a number of hotel general managers and owners and said, "What do we want to do with the T-bid?" Because again, the TOT side is used for leisure marketing, branding, and all the storytelling to support retail, restaurants, attractions, all of that. The T-bid is exclusively used for group marketing efforts. So what did we want to do when the T-bid goes away? Their view was, "Hey, this is great. We can continue doing it, because there are only nine of us. And we can go to direct contracts with our various properties and replicate what we've been doing with the T-bid." So that's really what we're trying to do here, is that the hotels have said, "This is great. We want to take it up to 5%." It will be listed as a tourism marketing fee, not a T-bid. And it will be passed through the consumer and the checks directed directly to Visit Newport Beach. Again, the governance of that are the assessed businesses who pay into this. That's why we segment everything, because technically under T-bid law, only assessed businesses get a right to have a say on how those funds are spent, because it's their money. It's the hotel's money, right? So out of this, we are not going to change our governance. The assessed businesses will still oversee MAP. And it's just easier for us to simplify this by going private. The governance again will stay the same. The way the money is being spent will stay the same. It just kind of makes it a little more simple in terms of allowing us to focus on sales, group sales, rather than having to comply with some of the reporting and all the other stuff that you have to do that I don't think it adds to transparency, but it makes a lot of work for our team. But I'm happy to answer any questions you have about it.
So you're the CEO of Visit Newport Beach and Newport Beach and Company. Will you be the CEO of the MAP?
Well, it's not really an organization per se. I mean, it, it, it is just like the T-bid in that the T-bid, MAP contracts with, with Newport Beach and Company to provide the services for that group marketing. So it's, 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 the funding is different, but they contract with us to provide those services.
Okay. So Visit Newport Beach will have a contract with the new organization to provide services?
We are the management entity for, yes, MAP.
And what is the management fee going to be from the MAP to Visit Newport Beach?
Well, remember, there is not a management fee per se. There are charges that are allocated to MAP, because all of our group sales efforts were paid by the T-bid and now they'll be paid by MAP. A portion of my salary and our accountant's salary goes and is supported by MAP, because we support MAP. Anything that supports that group sales marketing effort is paid by MAP or reimbursed to Visit Newport Beach for services.
Okay. So when I look at the budget for Visit Newport Beach, and maybe I'm going a little beyond this, but I'm trying to understand what, what exactly the T-bid is going to be doing going forward.
It won't, it'll be the same as it's always been.
Except it's not. So the, the reason it's not is because Visit Newport Beach exists as a company and you have segregated finances. You have the T-bid and you have the TOT and you have segregated those within one company and that one company has a contract with the city. Now it's not, because that, all of that T-bid money is now going to be going into a separate company that we have no control over and no governance over, like we do with VNB. And so the new company that would have a contract with the company, which is VNB, that we actually have a director on as a city and also have audit rights and a whole bunch of other things that come along with the contract, we have no relationship with the MAP. But Visit Newport Beach, Inc., under the TOT ledger, sends $2.9 million to Newport Beach and Company, which is where your salary is paid out of. But the, the visit, the T-bid currently pays nothing to Visit Newport Beach. So, I'm sorry, to Newport Beach and Company. So that's why I'm trying to understand, why in the world would the TOT be paying $2.9 million out of a $3.1 million budget for Newport Beach and Company, but have the MAP pay nothing to, for, for the, for the Newport Beach and Company fees? It's, it's a, it's a little confusing to me, because it doesn't seem like it's the same.
Well, the reason that the city doesn't have oversight on the T-bid per se is that the assessed businesses, under state law, the assessed businesses have to decide how those monies are spent, because it's their voluntary assessed business that pays into the fee. It's not considered tax dollars per se, because it, while it, because it's a private fee that is collected by the hotels for the purposes of marketing their specific hotels. So the money goes in, the money goes out. And so under, because it's under the state, it's, the T-bid was a special district of the state of California, there were compliance issues that we readily were happy to comply with. The governance of MAP really needs to rely on the people who are funding it, which are the hotels. The hotels are paying money into that program for a specific set of services relating to group marketing. That's the only reason why it's set up the way it is.
Okay. So you're the CEO of VNB. How much, what is the contract that you have negotiated with? Is, is the contract with Newport Beach and Company or VNB with the new MAP?
It's with Newport Beach and Company.
Okay. And Newport Beach and Company is the one that receives $2.9 million in fees and contributions from Visit Newport Beach?
Newport Beach and Company is the umbrella organization and covers overhead costs. So all the fees that we have to do to service the account, it's like hiring an ad agency, right? You, you would have fees and services to support the overhead for the ad agency. That's really all it is. It's, again, there's no money, there's no profit. The money goes in, the money goes out in, in servicing that.
How much did the T-bid, so now we're getting into the money that is left over from the T-bid. How much did the T-bid, how much did the, how much did Newport Beach and Company charge the T-bid for the, for what you just described?
Well, there was like a, it was probably a flat fee, I think, in terms of, for marketing support for anything that the T-bid needed. Because again, the T-bid has to support itself. So our direct, our vice president of sales, all the salespeople, their travel, the trade shows, all were paid for by the T-bid. We have about eight employees that are not paid by anything out of TOT. It's entirely covered by the T-bid, as it should.
Right. But the, the question is, that's not, that's not quite the question. The question was, I see a $2.9 million fee and contribution ledger in the budget from the TOT, but I don't see anything like that on the T-bid. So I'm asking, what did the T-bid, what is the T-bid currently paying for the overhead expenses of Newport Beach and Company that the TOT didn't cover?
Well, they paid a portion of the office rent. They pay a portion for any sort of equipment that they use. So it's anything that covers overhead that would be serviced by our marketing side of what we do, because occasionally the marketing people will do things that help support the T-bid. In those cases, the T-bid would have covered those costs.
I'm going to follow, we'll, we'll have longer conversations, I suspect.
I'm happy to.
Yeah, no, because I think it's important, because again, when I look at this in the budget, this is the budget that was provided to us. The T-bid, I don't see anything going to Newport Beach and Company from the T-bid in the budget.
Well, there is, and it's.
I'm sorry, hang on, Gary. And I see $2.9 million out of a $3.1 million budget coming out of the TOT ledger, not the T-bid ledger. So if we're now going to get rid of the T-bid and we're going to see, so I mean, there's only, there's only a $200,000 delta now. So if, if, if the T-bid was contributing anything, it would have to be somewhere less than $200,000, but the TOT is contributing 2.9 million.
The, the TOT doesn't contribute though.
Right. And that's the point, isn't it? So this is the, this is why I'm trying to understand when we're talking about the, the, the contract that now Newport Beach and Company is going to have with an outside agency. If you're going to be doing this much work that's already in the T-bid, wouldn't it, wouldn't Newport Beach? Newport Beach and Company need a contract that is at arm's length between the two companies? Because they're different companies. At arm's length, wouldn't, wouldn't the new company be needing to contribute as much, or if not more, than the TOT $2.9 million that's being contributed by, by the TOT?
Well, again, remember that the two buckets are separate, in the sense that the T-Bid is about group marketing, TOT is about overall marketing. If there's crossover, like, say, with the Rose Parade, they might split the costs to pay for certain expenses. But they're, they're created for very different reasons. The T-Bid was an optional funding formula to enhance group marketing. That's its sole focus.
Okay, so how much is Newport Beach and Company going to be charging the MAP for Newport Beach and Company's services? What's the contract say?
Well, there isn't a specific amount that we're, that we're charging to them, because right now, the overhead, the costs are pretty much contained within MAP. There's a, you know, there's probably a, a management fee for marketing services that amounts to maybe $30,000 a month, at the most, and that covers some of our marketing costs. The rest of it, though, is all paid out of MAP, 100% of it.
And MAP, okay. Are you, eh, eh, do you have an employment agreement with MAP yet? Are you going to have one?
No.
Okay.
Because MAP contracts with Newport Beach and Company.
Got it. Okay. This'll be, this'll be interesting to see how it plays. Anyway, any other questions? All right. Thanks, Gary.
And I, I just, I want to say, too, you know, this whole initiative was driven by our hotel community and hotel ownership. It was not our idea, it was the hotel's ownership to do this. This is driven by the industry. And I think we owe a, thanks to the hotels for willing to do this, because when they generate more marketing dollars, that's more TOT, that doesn't cost the city any money to generate that TOT. And that's the, that's the upside of it.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other public comments on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back. Any other follow-up? Councilmember Kleiman?
Yeah, so, I guess the decision to have the city act as a pass-through entity for the tourism bid, obviously long predates my time on this council. So I can't really speak to the reason for the structure, nor can I weigh in on how the hotels choose to organize their direct marketing efforts going forward, as Gary just said. That said, transparency, as the mayor has been getting at, is the business of this council. And I think there are a number of procedural inconsistencies, uh, some of which were outlined by Mr. Mosher's public comment letter that we received yesterday. And I think those are certainly worthy of acknowledgement as we consider rubber stamping this, what I would refer to as in plain sight resolution. Not the least of which is whether this is even the proper venue for the dissolution. I'm not even sure that, um, that it's necessary, or, like I said, proper for us to take action on it. But the, that's generally kind of where I sit, at least on, on this side of the discussion. But it does sound like we need to have a, a much more in-depth conversation about all of these entities going forward.
One last thing. So Mr. Mosher brought up, and this is an Aaron question, brought up a, uh, professional services agreement, um, between Newport Beach and Company and MAP. And then, he's referencing $4,594,728 as cash on hand for the T-Bid, um, that's going to be encumbered and then transferred to the new nonprofit. Have you had a chance to take a look at all of that?
So my understanding is that has already occurred. Maybe Gary can come back up and speak to that. But, uh, you know, we, we have a contract with Visit Newport Beach as the city, for them to be the owners of the association and, and, and basically manage the T-Bid operations. And they have represented to us that they have no debts or assets or any revenue remaining. And I think the way they got there is they basically cleared the books. Um, but the city of Newport Beach doesn't have any oversight over the transactions that they, that VNB engages in, in that regard. Their board approves things, you know, ultimately, uh, they have obligations to us under the contract, but we don't have the ability to review those type of transactions or to stop those type of transactions. And I don't know if Gary has anything else to add, as far as, as how the finances work with this, um, between, you know, Visit Newport Beach and, and the new, uh, meetings assessment partnership, but it'd probably be a good question to ask him.
Doesn't state law say that the month, there's anything money left over, cash, it has to go back to those that contributed to hotels?
Well, they've cleared the books, though, on it before. There's no money left. They basically have represented to us that they have no assets, they have no obligations, you know, they have no revenues left. And the way they got there, my understanding is that they basically did an agreement, which basically took all that money and transferred it, you know, over to this new, new entity, uh, to, to fulfill both the obligations, you know, of what was the T-Bid.
Okay. I mean, if we don't have the ability to have oversight, I mean, Gary, sure, if you'd like to explain that one.
So we're following, uh, the state statute on this, is that, um, when the T-Bid gets closed out, the remaining assets either have to be spent on behalf of the assessed businesses, or refunded to them proportionally based on their income. Uh, when we talked to the hotels, we looked at what the revenue is and what the programming is, and they came up with a whole set of programming that will basically liquidate all of that. If there are any, if there are any funds left over, then they would be refunded back to the assessed businesses proportionally. They are not being co-mingled with MAP. MAP is being kept separate and apart from the T-Bid. We are spending the T-Bid dollars right now until we get to zero, and then MAP is gonna start kicking in later on. But they are not co-mingled at all. And, um, and at this point, we expect that we will not have any assets or liabilities by the time this is finished.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
But, but just one sec. Then this letter here, as Mr. Mosher did bring up, it says you can continue to list it as your guest folios. I take it you probably won't do that, right?
The hotels will probably put tourism marketing fee, and that'll be where the 5% goes. So it will not be listed under T-Bid. It was presented at, at the last T-Bid meeting, Mr. Mosher was there, uh, where we corrected it and said, you know, initially, our attorney said you could use it, but we've changed it, and it's tourism marketing fee, and it'll be a 5% surcharge on only those MAP hotels.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I just want to be clear, because I, I guess I got lost on the journey here, in looking at this, uh, resolution that we're, um, looking at. In section two, it says that, um, the board finds that they, in, in number three, that the T-Bid will have no remaining revenue to be refunded upon dissolution. Aren't we looking at dissolving the T-Bid tonight? So if.
No, there'll be another hearing. So, so.
Okay.
So, what, when they, so the board for, for the T-Bid took action and basically told us, they don't have any assets, you know, they don't have any, any debts any longer. And then, for the disestablishment piece of it, um, we're basically saying, that's what they've represented to us, but if there's anything left over, this is how it gets distributed, and basically, that tracks state law.
I understand, and I have no problem with the method. I just want to make sure that we're being clear. I, I've heard two things here, I think. One is that the monies have already been transferred to the MAP, and then, so that was not the case. I, I had understood that from prior conversations with staff. The monies are still in the T-Bid.
Yes.
And will remain there to be distributed out of the T-Bid until they're all gone, or they are returned to the owners. Okay, because I definitely heard it both ways, and I want to be clear in what we're voting on.
That's state statute.
I agree, I understand. And I had some, um, concerns with the indications that the monies had just been somehow transferred to the MAP in some vehicle that I didn't necessarily see documentation for. So the monies remain in the T-Bid accounts. The T-Bid will continue to act until those monies are gone. And what we're doing tonight, when we are, I guess we're not dissolving, we are saying that we are, um, what's the word we're using?
Dissolution.
We're, we are dissolve, so.
Dissolution of the.
But it's not as of tonight, it's when those monies are gone now, is what we're saying. It'll be some date in the future.
This is setting a public hearing, it comes back in March, for the actual.
So by March, the $5 million will be all spent? Or returned to the, um, donor parties?
We're looking towards the end of June to have everything done.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're on a timeline that is consistent here and, and clear, so.
Yeah, and I, I think, do you think, it might be best just to, um, remove this item from the agenda, and let's go back and, and meet with Gary about, about some of this. Because, um, some of it's not consistent with what my understanding of the situation was, but I didn't, didn't see all the, uh, agreements that they had entered into. So maybe we should just continue this item?
Uh, so, before we do that, I just, let me just ask one, one, a follow-up, because this is, more importantly, you, you helped, I mean, you wrote the resolution, um, based on what you're hearing. I, I apologize, I, I didn't, okay. Based on, so, so is the resolution we would be adopting tonight consistent with what you just heard? Because it sounds like you understood things to be different than, than they were. So is this, is the resolution consistent, or would we need to amend the, the resolution?
I, I don't think, I don't think it is consistent. And primarily because we were relying on Visit Newport Beach's representation, that they had no, no debts and no assets left. And my, it was my understanding that they basically transferred all that. Um, you know, the T-Bid is no longer established, it's expired. I'm not sure, you know, you know, I think it needs more of a conversation about what they're engaging in as far as, you know, paying down the money. I hadn't heard, you know, this piece of it before, so it might, it might be best just to take a little bit of time and kind of figure out exactly what's happening before we move, move forward.
You know, the, you know, in terms of the T-Bid, we have already encumbered the money to be spent for the rest of the remaining budget. So we've worked with the hotels, we've said, "What shows do you want to go to? What missions do we need to, uh, attend?" And those assets have already been accounted for. And they are now being encumbered and spent until they get to zero. And then, at that time, that's when the MAP money will kick in on that side of the program. That's how we're looking at it. We're not co-mingling money.
If I could just say one, one other thing. So the state law provides two different paths. One's for disestablishment, where the city council takes actions and disestablishes it. And, and I think that that, ultimately, when we were kind of discussing this, that seemed like a very good path, because, kind of wrap up the entire organization and just be done with it. But the second path is, you know, it's expired, the city council really doesn't have to take action, this, you know, entity would just continue on, the state laws would govern, and then you wouldn't have to have any involvement. And then, if the, Visit Newport Beach has done things incorrectly, it, it's on them, and you've had no, no involvement with it. So there, there is another path here of just letting, you know, it's already expired, and if, if what's been done is appropriate, it's appropriate. If it hasn't, it's on, you know, Visit Newport Beach is the owners' association.
So that was the term I was trying to remember, and I was trying to find it in the document, disestablishment as opposed to dissolution. And I realized that the contract expired. I do want to say that I do have, I want to give a vote of confidence to, to, um, Gary and his organization, that I do feel that what they're trying to accomplish here is, this piece of it is, um, appropriate. I just want to make sure that we're on the same page with what we're voting on and what we understand to be the facts, so that we don't come back later and say, "I didn't understand that." I do understand that the hotel owners that are part of this have, are on board, it is their monies, it's not the city's monies that are, that are in the T-Bid. And it, would it be more appropriate for it to be spent one, done one way or another way? I think we rely on the city attorney to help us in structuring that. But I do have a vote of confidence with, um, the organization, that you're moving forward in a positive direction. I just want to make sure we're voting on something that we understand we're voting on. Okay?
Mayor Protem's table.
Are you saying we can do nothing tonight? And it sounds like it's already expiring, it's gonna be gone, and we just, if it, something happens, it's on them, we just move forward?
I think that that's right. I, I think ultimately, you know, we've had some issues with some of the other bids that, you know, kind of weren't wrapped up and disestablished. You know, there is a, a process under state law that says when they expire, you know, it has a process for what they have to follow. And, um, you know, we were trying to wrap this up and make it clean and disestablish it and be done with it, um, you know, in accordance with what the law provided. But ultimately, you know, there's a, there's a separate process where you don't have to take any action. And I'm confused about exactly what they did. And so, I'd kind of recommend that you just go down that route, just let it be expired, and, you know, take no additional action. We, we still have the contract with VNB, we still have our audit rights. And that's separate away from, you know, this whole disestablishment.
All right, I'm just gonna bring it back. I'm gonna move to table the item, um, to a future meeting, and, um, that meeting will be set if, uh, we find out that we needed to, uh, go the first route instead. So, so tabling the item means we're taking no action tonight?
And in theory, no action going forward, maybe if it's.
Yes.
Going to be on them to just let it expire.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, remember, the, the T-Bid is a funny mechanism. It's not an organization.
I would, I would take the victory on this one, Gary. Do I have a second for this one?
Yep.
Second by Councilmember Avery. Let's go ahead and vote. Okay. Longest item of the night. All right, so, um, we also pulled item number 12, correct? Item 12, okay. Item 12, do you need a staff report? Okay. Councilmember Kleiman?
Yeah, hopefully I can make this fairly quick. I, um, I just want to say, I am very much encouraged by the opportunity to engage a new partner, um, with our outreach and keeping with the spirit of bringing fresh eyes to our approach to homelessness, particularly in this instance where PATH has relationships with county shelter system and CalAim, health benefit, benefit systems that we've been missing, um, some of those gaps that we've identified and talked about previously. That said, because this is a new partnership at a time where we're continuing to make refinements as we go, and, um, where we have the potential for major changes to the legal landscape coming out of the Supreme Court, um, consideration of the Grants Pass appeal this summer, I think it would be prudent to pair this back to a one-year initial term with the two subsequent one-year extensions, so that we have that built-in checkpoint at that one-year mark.
Councilmember Wagon?
Is the, uh, the applicant or the, the company here able to, to see if that's in their interest?
Do have PATH, uh, here to, to speak to that, if council desires.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if we push it on them without them agreeing to it.
Oh, I agree with that. Yeah, come on up. Thank you. So I think the question is, your thoughts on what Councilmember Kleiman just referenced?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to collaborate with the city of Newport Beach on, uh, the homeless outreach services. I'm Melanie McQueen, I'm the Regional Director for PATH, and we are in discussion on the new contract. So we are working in partnership with the city's office to ensure that we can meet those requirements, um, and bearing in mind the things that you just mentioned.
Anything else? I'm not sure.
I don't have anything else.
Okay.
If I can just be clear, then, so you're willing to, because we have currently, it's set up as a two-year, but instead of a two-year, it would be a one-year with, with two one-year extensions, and you're, um, willing to accept that?
Yes, in principle, we're happy to move forward. And have that discussion with a move to, to move to a one-year plus one, plus one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I think, just to clarify, my, my, the reason for the request for the change is really more about, again, having a checkpoint, being able to revisit the scope of work at the end of that one-year mark. It's not that I anticipate that we'll have any issues, and again, I, I am very much excited about this new partnership, so want to emphasize that. But I just think it, it helps to have that built-in point. Um, you know, I'm sure we'll be working very closely, um, with staff through, through everything, and I'm sure you'll be very responsive to our needs. But, um, again, it's just helpful for us and, um, and all the work that we've been doing to have that, um, that check-in point.
Yeah. Absolutely happy to do that.
So, Aaron, so we, we would be making a modification of the contract, um, which sounds like we would need their, uh, approval to after tonight. So if we voted on, and I, I will come back to you, Councilmember Grant, I just wanted to do a clarification. So to understand, to make sure I understand this, if we, if we approve this item as modify, let's say there's a motion at the end of this, it's a modification of the contract on the term, um, since we don't have a clear agreement with them, we need to modify the agreement. If they came back and said, "Yes, we're okay with it," you'll make the changes, and then I can, I'd be able to sign it?
Yeah. So why don't you just give general authority to the city attorney's office to, you know, make that modification consistent with the terms that are here. So you'd have one-year term and two, you know, basically two years of potential extensions in one-year increments. And, you know, we'll go through the agreement and make sure it's consistent with that. And then you'd have authority to execute it.
Okay. Councilmember Grant?
I just also want to express a appreciation to staff and to hopefully, if we execute this contract, our new partners, we are very much looking forward to the enhanced scope of work that you have agreed to provide for the city. It's very meaningful to our community here that we have good providers. And it sounds like we are definitely moving in the right direction. We've worked really hard, all seven of us up here, to get to this point where we have really much more understanding and control over the management of the services that you're going to provide. So that we understand, you know, what exactly we're getting and how it's being accomplished. And we really are very excited for this important opportunity to make really, you know, pivotable improvement, pivoted, pivot at the improvement that's happening in our city. So we look forward to working with you. And we're very appreciative of your agreement to sort of consider, you know, contract terms that work for our city and understand that this is, you know, a fluid process and that we, you know, enjoy working with you on that fluidy, make sure that it's working from both ends. So thank you.
Okay. Any other comments up here? All right. So we're going to go to public comment now. If you have public comment, you're welcome to stay up there and do it. But we'll go to public comments on this item. Do we have any public comments on this item? This was item 12, if you wanted to speak.
Hi. My name's Melanie Martin, and I'm not a resident of this city per se, but I'm here with somebody who was a resident of the city temporarily, I think at least. And I have kind of a personal accounting of this because I just wanted, okay, regarding this item, I just wanted to request greater accountability regarding, like, I've looked, overlooked the scope of services. I've overlooked, you know, I understand there's a lot of funding and things. And I look up, you know, the program and, you know, different ways that they help with the community and help implement different health things and health equity and things like that, and implementing CalAim and helping people to have less, you know, costly healthcare and things like that. But a lot of these services that are saying they're, you know, the way that they're offered is they provide funding, you know, and there's funding provided for this or that. And I just think there's a lot of money that's kind of tossed around. And when I've helped some people in my community, or tried to anyway, I am kind of, I consider myself intelligent anyway. I go for the quickest, you know, source possible, the quickest solution, the most, you know, tangible, sustainable, long-lasting solution. How can I help this person become like more self-reliant or wannabe maybe even, or look at different options, things like that. And when looking, I decided to, you know, look for funding. I looked where the funding came from for the state, who received the most of the funding. I called HUD, their federal office, to see if it was a way to secure rental assistance on a personal or individual level that way, rather than having to go through agencies that are funded. And then they informed me of how things are funded and that they can't do that and that you go through agencies and you apply through an agency. So I looked up the agencies that received the most funding. And it was Family Assistance Ministries and South County Outreach, I believe. And so I helped a couple people to apply for services there. And ultimately, they ended up in tragic situations because at one key or another key stage of the process, the system just broke down. And I secured like a new sober living for one of, you know, one of the workers at one of the places, I won't mention the name of it. And he just kind of took, he promised that the funding was going to be used, that was secured for this one lady's rental assistance was going to be used to help her get into sober living when her apartment complex would not accept the amount for the assistance in full to take care of the back amount. So she was stuck needing to find somewhere else to go. And so he assured her that if we could find a place for her that would accept her and her situation with her, she had an alcoholism issue. Some people do and some people don't, but this one did. And he assured us that if he, it is an illness. And she was ill with other things as well and disabled from it, not just that, but from the other things. But anyway, sorry. She got to the sober living place and was told that she would receive funding, but she didn't. And he then added that as a resource for his own resources. And I believe got some bonus points for that. But I would just ask for greater accountability, especially at the step of the initial, when they get the information, to when they're placed, accountability for their safety during that time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. All right, we'll go ahead and bring it back. Councilmember Kleiman?
I will make the motion suggested by our city attorney.
I'll second.
And just to be clear, since it's a two, we're moving from a two-year to a one, there will be some other changes like compensation and whatnot. You're good with providing broad authority consistent with the terms, but just changing the term on that?
I am.
Okay. And you are too, Councilmember Wagon? All right. Let's go ahead and vote. All right. Madam Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
All right. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items?
Good evening. My name is Jessie Fleming. Tonight, I've been here for both meetings. And I just want to thank you for protecting our city and protecting our neighborhoods. I also really appreciate that you questioned further to try to understand things. So I'm here to ask for protection for my neighborhood. I live on a boat, on a mooring. And I have first lived here on a boat since 1987. We raised our children through the school district and we have businesses and so forth. But I know I only have three minutes, so I will tell you why I'm here, for protection. I know there's a harbor commission that is set to help raise funds for the harbor. We understand that. We love the harbor department. We work with them. A lot of the homeowners, or should I say boat owners, call when boats get loose. We help protect boats. We have saved people. We have saved boats. It was mooring owners that dove in the water on that cold night to save the sheriffs out of the helicopter. We've, my husband saved the drowning man from a rental paddleboard. Was there within 30 seconds later, he was already dead, but we brought him back to life. And then we were able to get the harbors out there. It was in front of the harbor department. So we are the eyes and the ears of the water. We love Newport Beach. And what's happening that will be coming across your desk soon is that there will be a proposal for a 400% hike on our tideland permit. We own our home, our boat. We own our mooring. We maintain our moorings. And we are just like a homeowner who pays a tideline permit. We're just like the marinas who pay for a tideland permit. We pay for a tideland permit for a space in the water. My space is 50 feet. But right now, there's going to be a hike that will bring it up 400%. From what I understand, the mooring owners are already paying 1,200% more than the landowners who pay this for the same permit, for the same water, so that we can all enjoy beautiful Newport Beach. So what I ask of you tonight is that when this proposal comes across, just please be fair. Make it where we are all helping Newport to be great. We're all working together to help support the harbor department, the sheriff department. We call when we see boats being ripped off. We call when we see suspicious things to the sheriff. We are there to be part of the community and we're proud to be part of the community. If you come to the meetings, there's one tomorrow night with Harbor Commission, you will see a packed room, standing room only, and many, many people giving their three minutes. We've had, some of you may have seen me in the article in the Daily Pilot. We've been on Nextdoor. We're the top post for the last two weeks. There's a lot of people behind us saying this is discrimination because you're charging one group more than the other. And there's a lot of people also saying this is social engineering, which I'm sure you guys don't want to be represented in that way. So I am happy to see that you guys care. And I'm happy to see that you ask questions. And I'm just asking you to please, please consider everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi there. My name is Kelsey McAllister, and I am a longtime Newport Beach resident. And tonight, I want to talk about a forgotten chapter in our city's history and to remember Wanda the whale, the first whale that was ever taken into captivity. On the morning of November 18th, 1961, a female orca got separated from her pod as they migrated past the Newport Beach harbor. She got horribly lost and found herself trapped in a dead end near Lido Village. A collection crew sent from the now-defunct Marineland of the Pacific located in Palos Verdes quickly came down to Newport to try to capture the animal so that it could be put on exhibit at their struggling theme park. Never before had an orca been captured alive, and the beautiful 17-foot creature named Wanda by the onlooking crowds tried her best to escape. For hours, the team from Marineland chased her with their nets all throughout the Newport Beach harbor. And time and time again, she would evade her captors. But by sundown, the poor orca had been, had become exhausted from dodging the boats and finally gave up. Her two-ton body was hoisted out of the water onto a flatbed truck and driven to her new life in captivity. Once at Marineland, Wanda was placed in a 100-foot by 50-foot oval tank. And for two days, she swam in violent circles repeatedly throwing herself against the walls of her tank. No more than 48 hours after she had been taken from her home in the Pacific Ocean, Wanda was dead. Many believe this to have been an act of suicide. And it wasn't until five years later that another killer whale would be captured alive again. And since then, 166 orcas have been seized from the wild and to be, and put on public display. I'm extremely passionate about drawing attention and awareness to what I believe is a barbaric act. And it is my opinion and the opinion of my dear friend Wyland, the famed marine life muralist, that Wanda deserves a special memorial in her honor and to commemorate the 166 orcas that came after her. I have spoken with him and we're passionate about getting a sculpture or at minimum a plaque of Wanda to commemorate her. So I'm here tonight seeking your guidance on how I can do that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, would you mind if we could have a staff member, you know, look into it, if one is in the audience, for Ms. McAllister, or at least talk to her to see what the process is for that?
So this is our city manager right after the meeting. She'll be right here. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you for that touching story. I support her efforts on that. Rest in peace, Wanda. My name is Chris Benson, and I'm talking tonight during the public comment on the deal with the mooring fees. And, you know, stories like Jessie's are countless. There are so many people in our harbor that, you know, can, you know, just barely afford the mooring fees as they are right now. And a lot of people are wondering, you know, why are we raising the fees? Why is this in front of the Harbor Commission? And it's really important that, you know, we get to the bottom of that. But also, it's frustrating as a mooring holder going to the mooring commission because a lot of times when you ask the mooring commission, you know, what is, what is going on here? And they're like, hey, you know, we're just studying the rates because city council told us to go do this, or city staff. And we're going to present to council, and then council can, you know, vote on it up or down. And then when we talk to council members, they say, well, you know, you need to go to the Harbor Commission meetings. They need to talk to them. We just get their, you know, their findings, and then we vote up or down on it. So it's like this real, like circular, you don't know where, who to hold accountable for it. But going over the numbers, like she had said, you know, 1,200% more. Right now, none of the mooring users, commercial or otherwise, private docks, we're all paying different rates for the same submerged tidelands, right? You know, the peers are paying, you know, 24 cents a lineal foot in some cases. And, you know, my 30-foot mooring, I'm paying $3.34 a lineal foot. And the, you know, the Netser appraisal, which the Harbor Commission's looking at, is talking about bringing my mooring fee up to, you know, $16 a square foot. And the Harbor Commission's like, hey, we're going to, you know, cut you guys some slack. We'll go lower. We're going to recommend 24% of this thing. And that equates to $12.02. So looking at 400%, as she has already stated. It's just an extreme amount when you're not also looking at the peers. And I don't want to throw the peers under the bus. The peers are behind us now. They don't, they see this action by the city council, and they say, hey, you guys are messing around with the rates. Are we next? Right? And so, you know, I've gotten hundreds of people together through outreach, organized and raised a ton of money. We're growing at a rate of like 10 people a week. And I can't remember where I was going with this thought, but you have to remember the, you know, Stop the Dock Tax and the Team Newport effort. If the homeowners get upset with this, you know, they have a lot of power and funding. So we don't want to repeat that whole issue. I think you guys could put this to bed by just passing a resolution that uses the state lands commission's rates. They have a benchmark system. They do appraisals every five years. And they did an appraisal in 2022. It's 45 cents a square foot. Just use that, pass a resolution that says, you know, we'll just keep with their benchmark, you know, or heck, add 10% to that or whatever. So you're doing your job for the, to the state.
All right. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Adam Leverens. Back in January, I emailed mayor and council encouraging you folks to attend the February 1st special meeting of the Harbor Commission related to what the gentleman just spoke about. I was informed by city staff that due to the Brown Act that you could not do so. I subsequently read through the Brown Act and the associated California Government Code, Chapter 9 meetings, and found that they don't preclude you from attending such meetings. The code seeks to prevent most forms of governance from occurring outside of the public eye, which you had a closed session earlier. You had one at the last meeting. These are usually contract things or real estate things or whatnot. So that's the intent of the Brown Act in the California Government Code. Specifically, it says, as far as you folks attending other meetings, "Nothing in this section shall impose the requirements of this chapter upon any of the following," that requirement being that you not attend meetings, "individual contacts or conversations between a member of a legislative body and any other person, the attendance of a majority of the members of a legislative body at a conference or similar gathering open to the public that involves a discussion of issues of general interest to the public, the attendance of a majority of the members of a legislative body at an open and publicized meeting organized to address a topic of local community concern by a person or organization other than the local agency, the attendance of a majority of the members of a legislative body at an open and notice meeting of another body of the local agency, which the Harbor Commission is." All of those have the caveat, "provided that a majority of the members do not discuss among themselves business of a specific nature that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body or the local agency." Now, the Harbor Commission said that council will be fully briefed on the outcomes and significant points discussed at those meetings. I don't know who's deciding what's a significant point. And I'm trying to make sure that you folks have the, all the information you need to make a well-informed decision. I've seen other places where the city attorney is the most powerful civil servant here. You all are elected, but the city attorney still, rightfully so, tells you what to do. And that's, maybe you don't listen sometimes.
So I'm going to need a 10% raise.
And I mean, he's looking out for your best interests and trying to protect you from liability. But I, until I know otherwise, I believe all you folks are intelligent enough and have good enough sense that you could attend a Harbor Commission meeting and not there try and govern. And I, there's a meeting tomorrow. I don't want to be here tonight. I don't want to be there tomorrow night, but I will be. I didn't want to be here on the 23rd. If you can't go, don't want to go, would rather sit at home in your pajamas with your favorite beverage, I emailed with the city clerk, and apparently there's audio of the meeting of January 10. of January 10 and February 1. And I encourage you to at least listen to the public comment and the Newport Mooring Association presentation so that you can be aware of all the facts and figures that are bandied about. There's a lot of information. Thank you.
Need to do it right now or...
Just really quickly, I just want to correct one thing that you said, that the city attorney is here to protect your interest and the interest of every resident, business, and visitor to this city, as well as what happens here tonight. And we are very fortunate to have such an accomplished city attorney doing that for us.
And you all are residents as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Okay. My name is Kathy Gilbert and I'm part of the Love Newport Beach movement. And I wanted to extend an invitation to come to our next city leaders' gathering. We had a great time at the end of October and we're doing it again, and it's going to be the end of this month. It's going to be at the Friends Room at the library. And I have a couple, I'll hand them out to whoever I catch. I'll give an invitation. I'll also send to the city, to different ones about our upcoming, and it's fun. It's free lunch. So, and it's, our focus is on neighboring.
Awesome. Yeah, please hand to our all-powerful city attorney.
And, oh yeah. And so with that, I also want, besides that invitation, I want to extend to all our city leaders, and I just want you to know that we pray now, on the first Monday of the month of every month, we pray now at City Hall, walk around and pray. We have a group of us. We've met for the first time in January and we've met in February. We're going to continue on each month. We also pray at St. Andrews Presbyterian Church the second Wednesday of the month at noon for you all. And so with that, just want to say thank you. We honor you. We appreciate you and we pray for you. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name's Mike Fleming. I'm the captain to the admiral. We've looked at the appraisal for the moorings versus the slips, and I find that the tidelands or the state, is it State Lands Commission, wants the tidelands to be managed equitably. I know it's a big deal now, equitable or equal. But if we're going to compare moorings to slips, why would we choose a commercial slip to a non-commercial mooring when there's really more slips that are non-commercial? And the slips that we would love to be compared to are the ones around the edges of the harbor. They're obviously much lower than the ones that we're using. The moorings, as far as it was told to me, I've been coming to this harbor longer than I've been out of the womb, and this has always been for everybody. This harbor doesn't belong to Newport Beach residents. We just are real lucky that we live around it. But the CPI for this area is based on LA County, Orange County, Riverside County. If those are the consumer price index that should reflect the raises in the rates, this is not supposed to be a capital, commercial, fair market value. You're not selling anything. You're just charging a rent over a spot in the water where we have to buy a bunch of metal and have it serviced, you know, repeatedly. And it just seems crazy that you would choose a commercial marina, that you choose how much it costs for people to use the marina. And Newport's the finest harbor in Southern California. People can't afford to get a slip here. People who've been driven off the moorings because the last raise went and got a slip in Shoreline. So it's pretty obvious that the moorings are for the people that can't afford to buy a house and have a slip in front of their house. And it's kind of insulting that the people that actually have a slip in front of their house, because I know this because I paid $3,000 to $4,000 a month to put a commercial, to put a boat at somebody's private marina in front of their house. And the fellow's making $10,000 a month on a dock he doesn't pay anything for. I pay more for my mooring than he pays for his dock. It's just, I just can't imagine that we would be the ones that you would want to raise the rates on again. You could possibly, you could bring them up a pittance. The 800 docks are paying almost the same as the 400 inshore moorings, the little guys, the ones that are limited to 18 feet. They pay to the tide fund almost the same as the docks. We're paying four or five times as much out on the moorings. And the comparisons ends at the end of the dock. Our, what we have and what they have, you get to the end of the dock and then how do you get to your boat? And that's just the beginning.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I just wanted to thank all the members of this community and the great members of the city council, the city attorney and city manager for all the support and help that you guys have all given us since we've been on the streets. It has been a struggle for sure, and I understand that it's hard to understand how to help someone when you haven't been in their shoes before. And I know that as we all work together as a community, we can help all of each other out. And I know that with your guys' help, my kids and I, we won't be on the streets anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor O'Neill and members of the council, Jim Mosher. I have a public service announcement that I was a little surprised didn't come in. Your announcements earlier in the meeting. A few minutes ago, we heard about the possibility of the city wanting a whale sculpture. As you know, we already have sculptures here in the Civic Center Park. And at your last planning session, there was some discussion about maybe changing the direction of how that would work in the future. But as I think you know, you have one coming phase of that that has already been approved by the council. And the public service announcement that I was surprised not to hear is that the council has directed that the public be allowed to choose what the sculpture should be in that next phase, and that is accomplished through a public poll. And the public poll is open only for a month, and it seems to have opened about two days ago. And so I'm sure the Arts Commission wants as many people as possible to vote on their preferences for those sculptures coming up. And people who want to participate in that poll, on the city website, if they put the word sculpture in the search box, they'll find a page called Sculpture Exhibition in the Civic Center. And if they look carefully under that, they'll see a image here that is an invitation to participate in the poll through March 11th. And they have, I think, 29 or something choices, and they can pick up to 10 that they would like to see. And the more people who participate in that, the more representative it will be of the public's choices, which is what the council in the past asked for. Thank you.
You. Next speaker, please.
Add to an already long evening, quick public service announcement. Good afternoon, evening, mayor and members of the council. My name's Nancy Scarborough. I'm sure that you're all aware of the fire department's recent achievement of the public protection classification rating of Class 1. Councilman Kleiman mentioned it earlier. Our residents may be unaware of this rating or what it represents. Class 1 rating is the highest possible PPC rating given to fire departments across the nation, and it's a very difficult level to achieve. The evaluation process to attain a Class 1 rating examines and scores fire departments on the community's water supply, training of fire department personnel, emergency communication systems, and adequate staffing. Aside from the obvious benefits of having a well-trained and managed fire department, there are benefits to our residents that they may not be aware of. This rating is used by insurance companies when determining their homeowner's insurance premiums. A Class A, one, a Class 1 PPC score rating may lower their insurance premiums. All of this requires the support of the community, city staff, the city council, and the city manager to provide sufficient funding and support of the fire department to enable them to achieve the objectives required to be honored by a Class 1 rating. I hope that we will continue to provide that level of support to maintain the Class 1 rating, and I think it would be a fantastic thing for the city to codify this in a council policy. The majority of the accolades really rightfully goes to the fire department's management and personnel. A Class 1 rating demonstrates our fire department's commitment to excellence. About 5% of the fire departments across California are able to achieve this Class 1 rating. I would like to thank the community, the city staff, the city council, the city manager, and the exceptional fire department, most of all, for their service, their management, and their professionalism, hard work, and dedication in achieving this goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right. Say none. We'll move into public hearings, item number 13. Staff report? Anyone? Okay. You're going to be off the hook here. All right. Any comments or questions? All right. We'll go out to public comments on this item. Do we have any public comments on item number 13? Okay. I was waiting.
Hi. My name is Laura Curran. I attended all the meetings that happened prior to this agreement being made back in 2008. So the question that I have as this agreement sunsets, it gave certain rights to sober living by the sea, which, based on my understanding of the staff report, they are ending the agreement and they would not have those rights in the future. So at the same time, my question is, does the city lose any rights when, or ability to regulate sober living by the sea beyond the regulations that would be in place in the future? Because what I understand from the staff report, it says they would vacate this agreement and then in the future they'd be governed by existing sober living, or let's call them unlicensed drug and alcohol rehab treatment center regulations. So my question is, do we give up any level of ability to enforce ordinances related to sober living by the sea or on a precedent basis for other unlicensed drug and alcohol treatment center, living situations, which would be covered under a similar agreement? So that's the piece that I was trying to understand after I read the staff report. So I understand this is not a Q and A, but that's my question, having been there and seen this. And I do appreciate, I especially appreciate council member Kleiman wrote an extensive and well-thought-out editorial in the Newport Beach Independent and other locations explaining Proposition 1, which will be on the ballot and proposes to expand the availability of these types of treatment centers with extensive state-led programs which counteract or countermand the ability of local programs and county programs while not giving them enforcement powers. So we appreciate those efforts. We know you're making those efforts. Council member Wagon also attends the Sober Living Task Force, and his experience in county and state legislative affairs in that committee, which is chaired by Katrina Foley, and fellow council members from Mission Viejo and many other Orange County cities is evident. So that's appreciated as I make these comments. So in this particular situation, I just want to understand what we get and what we don't get from the sunsetting of this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? All right, bring it back. Simone or Erin?
So regarding with that question, so the operator has voluntarily terminated all operations in the city and they've requested to terminate their agreement with the action today that this agreement will no longer operate. If this entity, sober living by the sea, wants to enter back into the community, they can go under the state law, which allows them to occupy a residential home with six or less occupants. And if they go over six, like seven occupants, then they'll need a minor use permit through the city. So that is what state law allows, and with termination of this agreement, they have voluntarily terminated and ceased all operations in the city.
Okay. Councilmember Grant?
So just to be clear, they always had the right to operate a six-and-under, unlicensed. Even though they had this agreement for other types of operations in the city, they presumably could have had, been working in two different tiers. They weren't restricted from their rights under state law for an unlicensed. They're just actually vacating additional rights that they had. They're not getting anything more from us.
Well, I want to turn to the city attorney to see what the past history, this was kind of settlement item.
I guess my question is, were they precluded from a six-and-under? I don't believe that they were under that agreement.
So they had a lot of guaranteed units here. I think this is absolutely a good thing, and I don't think we give up anything because they had several hundred units that they could put into the city and operate under the terms of this agreement. I think the agreement did work well and that they were a good operator under that. But, you know, that didn't prohibit, you know, basically, they would have had the ability to come forward with some number type of state license, six-and-under, you know, and putting that in Newport. You know, so I don't really see that we're losing anything here. They're basically giving up a whole bunch of units that they had guaranteed and then basically going to have to go through the regular process if they want to come back, which would be, you know, complying with the municipal code or complying with state law if there's some type of exception.
I just want to be clear to the public that we're not giving them something more or something different. They always had the right to have six-and-under. They just had extra rights that now we're terminating, they've asked to terminate, and we're terminating gladly. Correct?
That's right.
Yeah.
Councilmember Avery.
I assume that when this transaction happens between the two businesses, so the property's transferring also?
No, no, the properties are not transferring. Not from our understanding. This is the operation.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Kleiman?
Sorry, just to speak to that, though, they did have the ability to transfer, which is what we talked about when they last came before us, and they didn't opt to do that. So I think that's an important point to acknowledge here. They could have sold the entity that had all of these rights built in. And also, city attorney mentioned units, but I think really you probably meant beds. Well, they had a lot of units, but they had a lot of beds that they weren't using and could have. And also that concentration, they had a number of units that were clustered together. All of those things would not be allowed without that settlement agreement or the agreement that we had in place with them. So again, we stand to gain quite a bit from them dissolving this and having not sold or transferred it in any way. Just wanted to note that. But I will make the motion.
All right. Staff recommendation moved by councilmember Kleiman, seconded by mayor Protem Stapleton. Let's go ahead and vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance, Title 4 Ordinance 2024-4, an ordinance of the city council of City of Newport Beach approving the termination and development agreement number 2008-5 zoning implementation and public benefit agreement between the City of Newport Beach and Sober Living by the Sea. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
That was a good vote. All right. Let's go with item number 14. And then another question. Anyone want the staff report on this one? Nope. Okay. Do I have any public comments on this item?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. This item is about overriding a decision by the Airport Land Use Commission that a particular development proposal in our city was inconsistent and incompatible with the airport. And technically, all you're doing here is announcing that you're going to hold a hearing on considering whether you should override that. So perhaps this is not the time to comment, but when that hearing comes up, I will be raising the question and hope you are thinking about what consequences overriding their decision has on the city in terms of liability. Because both the Airport Land Use Commission, a county agency, in doing their override, in doing their denial, understands that if you override that, it will relieve the county as the operator of John Wayne Airport of any future liability for accidents or anything else that happens in connection with this development. And you are telling the developer they don't know what they're talking about. It's really okay to put residential development in this area. One would guess if the state law relieves them of any liability, the liability then comes to the city who told them it's okay to do it. I have never heard a clear explanation from our city attorney of why that is not true. I recently came to the conclusion he must be relying. What you will see here on the Planning Commission's recommendation is there's a condition of approval. What you will see here on the planning commission's recommendation is there's a condition of approval that the actual developer of these residences would indemnify to the extent, fullest extent permitted by law, this condition of approval number 50 on page 14-194, near the end of this big agenda packet. I am not a lawyer. I do not know that that just saying that they are responsible for anything happens actually relieves the city of potential responsibility for that. As a non-attorney, I would certainly think the city would be partly responsible if something bad happened at this location. So I would caution you not to override their decision by the airport that it's not compatible use. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? All right. We'll bring it back. I very much don't see this, this item as telling the Airport Land Use Commission that they don't know what they're talking about. We just simply have sometimes different priorities. All right. Do I have a motion on this item?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Moved by councilmember Wagon, seconded by councilmember Grant. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you very much. We'll move into item number 15. Any requests for staff report? Seeing none, we'll go out to public comment. Do we have any public comments on this item? Okay. We'll bring it back. Any discussion? Okay. Councilmember Wagon makes the motion. Would we like to go double it up? Councilmember Grant? There you go. Councilmember Grant seconds it. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. Madam Clerk.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council, either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Do we have any motions for reconsideration? All right. Councilmember Wagon is going to adjourn tonight.
Yes, tonight we adjourn in the memory of Helen Jerry Dwan, a longtime Newport Beach resident who recently passed away at the age of 92. Jerry was born in Pittsfield, Maine, and attended George Washington University in Washington, DC. After college, she worked in the office of the Assistant Secretary of Defense for International Security Affairs. It was there that she met her future husband, Army Colonel Jack Dwan. They were both members of the United States delegation to the Geneva Conference and attended as members of the United States Defense Department's delegation to the Paris Conference. Jerry and Jack were married in 1955. The couple lived abroad for several years due to Jack's service in the US Army and welcomed two children, Bradley and Kimberly. In 1969, the family moved to Coronado, Mar. Jerry quickly immersed herself in the community through her children's school activities, a membership in the Balboa Bay Club, Racket Club, and Newport Harbor Yacht Club. Jerry was passionate about the arts. She was involved in the Newport Harbor Art Museum, the Decorative Arts Society, and the Angels of the Arts. When her children went to college, Jerry obtained an interior design license and founded Dwan Designs, a hobby that quickly turned into a successful business. Jerry is survived by her sister, two children, three grandchildren, and five great-grandchildren.
We stand adjourned. Thank you very much.